Okay, we're live. Good morning, everyone. Morning fellow commissioners, and I'd like to welcome you to this county commissioners meeting. Today, October or not October, August eighteenth, two thousand and twenty. I first of all would like to make public announcement that the public will be able to comment immediately following the public hearing presentation. For planning and zoning and also during the public comments section of the agenda by calling three zero seven eight seven two three eight nine one. Or by sending comments ahead of time via email to public comments at sweet dot W I dot U S. With that, I'd like to call this meeting to order and note and notify that we do have a quorum present. Everyone, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
The flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God. Indivisible and with liberty and justice for all.
Our first order of business today will be the approval of the agenda and with that commissioners. Two, two, two adjustments, first of all, under tab L rather than approve the. Request for the indemnity, usage and indemnity agreement for electing polling place at the Catholic church. Commissioners were contacted and supportive that because it had to be in place for today, so therefore rather than approve, it'll be to ratify. That approval because it was approved by three commissioners. And so that'll be a ratified rather than approval and then also. I'd like to amend the agenda as well to add a table which will be all West. Cablevision, all West communication update with Mr. Corolo as well as another individual from all West, so. And if there's anything else for other commissioners to add or amend. If there isn't, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda with the two mentioned amendments.
So move.
Motion by Commissioner Johnson, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Shane Field, all in favor. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose same sign, motion carries. Next up is the approval of the minutes from August fourth, two thousand and twenty. Commissioners, your pleasure.
Mister Chairman.
Commissioner Shane Field.
Make a motion to approve the minutes from August fourth, two thousand and twenty as presented.
Got a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second Commissioner Lloyd, all those, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose same. Oppose same sign, motion carries. Next on the agenda is approval of our bills, which will include the. The county vouchers and warrants, the bonds, the monthly reports, as well as the hospital expenditures. Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
Mister Chairman, I move that we approve the county vouchers and warrants, the A L, the bonds, the monthly reports, the hospital expenditures as presented.
You have a motion to approve those as presented, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lloyd, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose same sign, motion carries. Next order of business is of the planning and zoning, we have a public hearing regarding the Ranch View Estate subdivision final plat. Here to present that is Mister Bingham from planning and zoning, and I believe you have a couple other individuals with you, is that correct, Eric?
Yes, it is Mister Chairman, so. The individuals that are also, well, first let's introduce the developers and they are on the call. That's who you see on the Zoom call there, Lane, so that's Lane and Laura Phillingham. And there's also another developers that is Randy Lauder and Judy Lauder are also on the call. We also have Randy Hansen, he is the engineer with J F C that designed the subdivision, so that's who we have us.
Thank you, Eric, and good morning to Laura. To Elaine and Lauren and Randy and Judy, as well as Randy Hansen, thank you for being here, so floor is yours, Eric.
Thank you, Mister Chairman, so. Today we, we are hearing the final plat, this is for the Ranch View Estate subdivision. The property owner is Randy Lauder and Lane Phillingham and also is the applicant. It's a forty one point eight nine acre in section one township eighteen North Range one oh eight West. The location of this is north of Interstate eighty off of Ganslin Road, it's adjacent to the Green River Golf Course. The zoning is R one, single family residential, it is our most restrictive zoning classification. Which does not allow horses it or agricultural animals. And it only allows site built homes. The infrastructure is going to be septic system. It was approved through the Wyoming Department of Environmental Quality, which is a requirement. As per state statute and they have received approval from D E Q on both the water and the septic systems. Due to the location. The D E Q is requiring advanced septic systems on these lots. It will be as far as the responder, Green River Fire Department and Sweetwater County Fire Warden. Rocky Mountain Power and Dominion Energy Natural Gas. They submitted a preliminary plat back in two thousand and nineteen of May, which was approved for the one. And they also received a variance from the Board of County Commissioners for the one acre lot size. Domestic water is going to be provided by Jamestown Rio Vista. And we know that they do not provide public sewer, so it'll just be a public water system in there. The roads will be constructed to Sweetwater County standards and dedicated to the county for maintenance. The county is requiring a sixty foot right away, which is on the plat, and then there are ten foot utility easements on both sides. As required by the growth management area. Parts, portions of lots seven, eight and nine are located within the FEMA designated floodplain. That's why those lots are a little bit larger than one acre to provide enough building envelope to locate homes. And onsite drainage infrastructure will be utilized to control runoff. So right here, Mister Chairman and Board of County Commissioners is the location of all three phases. What we're constructing is this location right here that's adjacent to the river, which is phase one. Phases two and three were approved on the preliminary plat, will be built at a later time. Just phase one for right now, so here is the final plat. And phases one shows you the location. What you can see on a dotted line here is the existing Ganslin Road. That will be vacated after the construction of the subdivision, so in a few months you will see us coming back before the commissioners to vacate that road. So while these roads are being constructed to county standards. And then coming into here is the Ganslin Road, so. Three different roads you can see here will be located on there, and then this is lot seven, eight, nine here. That show you they're a little bit larger in size to provide for that FEMA zone. Zoning is R one, it's adjacent to the Ganslin Ranch subdivision. As far as public agency comments that have come in. There, there was a requirement from Rocky Mountain Power to extend the utility easement, the applicant has done that. As far as my comments go, just so you're aware, we have not received letters of credit yet for the improvements. I do have attached a subdivision improvements agreement that I will discuss in just a moment. And we're still waiting for the check for the fees in lieu of. As far as emergency management go, they had no concerns, Dominion Energy, they didn't have any concerns either. So back when we heard this before the Planning and Zoning Commission. We were awaiting the county engineer for construction plans to be approved, we did receive a final rendition. Last night and Gene did go over those and has approved the construction drawings. So that part has been taken care of, so the construction drawings have been approved. So we are still awaiting, like I stated, the bonding. So the recommendation before the Planning and Zoning Commission was to approve it. With the following conditions that letters of credit needed to be submitted. And then the subdivision improvements agreement executed and provide a check for fees in lieu of. And the construction drawings needed to prove prior to the commissioner hearing. And as I stated, the, the construction drawings have been approved. So I prepared a resolution before you, Mister Chairman and Board of County Commissioners that states that. It is approved conditioned upon the letters of credit being submitted prior to the recordation of the plat. Execution of a subdivision improvement agreement before the recordation of the plat. And the check of fees in lieu of is also submitted prior to the recordation of the plat. As per state statute, we have to have financial guarantee prior to a recordation of a plat, so. With these conditions, Mister Chairman, I feel confident that we can approve this today. We're try, we put these conditions in here today so that the, when they do get that bonding in place, that. They don't have to wait till the next commissioner meeting to get started on construction, as we know in Wyoming. We have this short construction season and they would like to get this constructed this year. As far as the subdivision improvements agreement goes, when I submitted the packet, it had the incorrect amount on there. I had spoken with the Phillinghams, what they had in there was that they were going to put a phone line in. And they were bonded for the phone line. And when I spoke with them, they did not want that as a part of the subdivision improvements agreement. And so I have changed the amount as per removing that phone line out of there. And what you see on there is what it should be is the total improvements agreement is one million five hundred and eighty eight thousand six hundred and fifty seven dollars and twenty one. Thirty one cents, twenty one cents, and so that's what, Mister Chairman, what I'm asking for today is approval of the final plat. As per this resolution and then the subdivision improvements agreement also executed. We can go ahead and sign that improvements agreement. I have spoken with Rock Springs National Bank who is doing the bonding for this and we hopefully with, within the next. Few weeks here do receive that bonding and that's all I have, Mister Chairman.
Thank you, Eric, do there any questions for Eric from the commissioners?
Yes, Mister Chairman.
Your Johnson.
I'd like to know whether Randy and Lane are all right with the conditions that are improved, that have been included in this. Resolution and also if they have any comments about the subdivision improvements agreement, any problems with that?
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson, floor is open, Randy or Lane?
Yeah, we're comfortable with what's being presented and I don't think we have any comments.
Thank you, Lane, is that your questions, Commissioner Johnson?
Yes, it does.
Thank you, any other questions for either the owners this time or Eric? Without any further questions, I think first order is to open this up for public hearing, Eric, is that correct, the final plat?
That is correct.
We'd have a, open the floor up for a public hearing for the final plat, which is the recommendation two zero dash zero eight dash zero dash zero one. Open for a public hearing, floor is now open. Anything, Tim?
No comments, no.
Eric, while we're waiting for public comment, of course, next will be approving the resolution. Final plat.
Yes, and Mister Chairman, we also need in that motion to authorize Chairman to sign the subdivision improvements agreement.
To authorize to sign what?
The subdivision improvements agreement. And Mister Chairman, I have provided a copy to Sally.
Good. Thank you, any other comments, Tim? I'll close the public hearing for the resolution two zero dash zero eight dash zero dash zero one, the final plat. Our next order for action will be to approve the final plat resolution, resolution two zero dash zero eight. That zero, I'm sorry, Z O dash zero and. Also to authorize the chairman to sign the subdivision improvement agreement, is that right, Gary, Eric?
That is correct.
Okay, I'll.
Mister Chairman.
Mister Johnson.
I make a motion that we approve the resolution twenty dash zero eight dash Z O dash zero one. And also approve the subdivision improvement agreement and authorize the chairman to sign the subdivision improvement agreement.
Thank you, we have motion by Commissioner Johnson, is there a second?
Second.
Now a second by Commissioner Lloyd, any further discussion commissioners?
Do we need to mention the conditions in there or is that assumed?
It's part of the resolution.
It's part of the resolution, so thank you though. Any other discussion commissioners? With that, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose same sign, motion carries, thank you gentlemen. Thank you, Eric, thank you. Gentlemen for joining us this morning for this and we'll move on now to our next order of business.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you and good luck and hope it all works out well.
Thank you.
All right, next up is county resident concerns. I'll open up the meeting for county residents concerned, concerns at this time. Floor is now open.
Mister Chairman, I have a couple comments that came in through the public comments email.
Very good.
The first is from M L Boran fifty eight at gmail dot com and didn't leave a name, but. The comment is Sweetwater County used to run very well with three commissioners, let's go back to three, that will save money. The second is from Joseph Queros. Says now is not the time to spend money, okay, regarding the Lagoon project. Now is not the time to spend money on this project, not too long ago, the county budget was reduced and cuts were made to several departments. My support would be for the county departments.
Thank you, Tim.
Two comments.
Floor is still open for public comment. Floor is still open for public comment. Anything, Tim? Okay, I'll close the portion of public comment and we'll move on to our next item, which is commissioner comments or reports and. Good morning commissioners again, and first up Commissioner Johnson, floor is yours.
Thank you, Mister Chairman, first I have the public works report. For August eighteenth, buildings due training went very well last week and we will be trying out the software and training mode. For the next two weeks to work the bugs out of this process. Full implementing, full implementation across facility maintenance, custodial and parks and rec will begin August thirty first. Engineering, S and L industrial is striking mine roads west of Green River. And completing all of the handwork in around, in and around the Rock Springs this week. Road and bridge, the C Mac and dust control projects were completed yesterday. Crews are finishing up placing base course on cattle drive, C R number one two four nine. North Rock Springs and Farson lower cutoff road, C R number eight from State Highway twenty eight north. Crews are also getting the other roads ready for the busy hunting season. Fleet maintenance, the two fleet maintenance personnel have been working extremely hard over the summer to keep everything in work, in working order and on the road. They have seen everything imaginable this year, taking care of the fleet of over a hundred and eighty three licensed vehicles. Included in the report which you now, which you have are a couple pictures that Gene has provided. One of the other items that I, I did at my request, I had a meeting with Marty Corolla on all West and as a result of that, that's why they're on the agenda today. What I asked Marty to do after much, a long discussion I had with him, as to the feedback I was getting from. People within the community relative to what all West was doing, I suggested it would be in the best interest of the, of the. County of always would come before us and tell us what they're doing and what the ramifications of that were going to be. And Marty, as usual, was very willing to do that and as a result is on the agenda today. On the twentieth, which is later this week, I will be in Kemer. In the C L G meeting there, we'll continue to discuss the issues that. Continue to come up with our testimonies, both Mister Conley and myself, as to the Public Service Commission. Relative to the power plants in both Lincoln County and Sweetwater County. So that's all I have today.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson, is any questions?
Just a comment, Mister Chairman.
Yes, Commissioner Smith.
Last, two weeks ago, I had the opportunity to head down towards Ramsey Ranch and saw one of our county workers out there doing some grading. And I tell you what, the part of the road, the county road that had not been graded was rough and difficult, but. He was doing an awesome job, I was so happy to see him and get on past him and it was, it was excellent, so. Thank you to that department and those who are working down there, we really appreciate all that they can do.
Thank you, Commissioner Smith, and that'll be passed on, I'm sure. We, all those guys in that department out there have got a lot of roads to do. And our roads are in better shape than most other places in the state, so that's passed on, thank you, any other comments?
I just follow up with what Jeff just said, that's what Gene indicated in his report. That road on the Ramsey Road and that then goes up from the Ramsey Ranch on top of Little Mountain is extremely important to the hunters in, in the county, so. It's good that Jeff was out there and noticed that and knew the difference between a well graded road and one that's not.
Thank you, and all, any other comments commissioner for Chris Johnson? One quick one for me is I appreciate you getting a hold of or visiting with Marty, getting him on the agenda today for all West, Mister Johnson, that's. We're all looking forward to hearing that, so thank you. Up next, I guess, is myself reports, thank you Commissioner Johnson first and then myself lays on work, of course, still going. Much by technology and that type of thing, so a few highlights, of course, this time of year. The biggest highlights are fire and that type thing, we've had a few, but. The county for the most part, other than Clay Basin, has escaped any major fires so far. Any further major fires, because that was pretty major, did burn into the line that are across the state line, that type of thing. We did offer some assistance and gave some assistance to Carbon County on their fire that was over near. The county line, we had crew over there to help with that and that was put to rest very quickly before it got really, really huge. As we all know, smoking the air and that type of thing is a lot of that's coming out of Colorado. All the, my understanding is it's beetle wood, dead beetle wood that's being. Caught on fire and burning crazily throughout the, quite a bit of Colorado and. And of course Colorado's resources are, are maxed out and basically to the point to where they put out a call and. Was doing some further checking and that type thing commissioners, we do have a crew assisting in Colorado and providing. More or less. Protection from fire spreading and actually being in there battling it, so we do have a crew down there and hopefully they'll be back here shortly. But they're assisting, so that type thing also, just so everybody knows, there are fire restrictions on Ashley and B L M. Land and they're pretty, they mirror each other on the restrictions for fires and that type of thing, so we have those in place now in the county. On those two. Federal properties, B L M as well as. The Ashley, also to report the other thing is we did have a communities. Protecting the green yesterday, I will send out to you the water reports, but a couple highlights on that is Lake Mead is. At a thousand eighty four feet as of August fourteenth, which is a hundred and four, approximately a hundred and forty five feet below full pool, so. They're nearing. Their usage, Lake Powell as of August thirteenth is at three thousand six hundred and three and a half feet, which is ninety six point four five feet. Below full pool, it's down, Lake Powell is down seven point five nine feet from this time last year. Rivers feeding Lake Powell, of course, are running at forty four point five nine feet per second as of August fourteenth. Of course, above Lake Powell up this way, there's twenty eight tract reservoirs and all of them are combined are seventy nine point eighteen percent capacity. Fontanelle is currently running at six thousand. Five hundred and two as of August thirteen and the upper green snow pack is at ninety three percent of medium as of August fourteenth. I think the big issue that's coming around on, and flaming gorge is currently at six thousand. Twenty eighth as of August thirteenth, which is approximately eighty six point four percent full pool, which means it's about twelve foot below full pool. And water level is down almost about five and a half feet from a year ago and rivers are feeding flaming gorge at seventy five point. Eighty two percent of, of what it was a year ago. Big information I think that's everybody's following right now is the Lake Powell Pipeline in Utah. Which is to divert out of Lake Powell eighty thousand, eighty six thousand acre feet of water, it's in its draft D I S at this point in time. And they're continuing, this project involves Moab Counties, Coquahno Counties in Arizona, as well as Kane and Washington Counties in Utah. And of course, it's being watched very closely by many conservation groups privately funded as well as public and I fully anticipate when. Things, when the P I S and the recorded decision and that type thing comes out, we'll see. I fully expect some lawsuits to be filed by private people believing there's not enough water. Presently in the green to handle such a diversion, so with that. Lays on work and everything, that concludes my report and I'll stand for any questions.
Mister Chairman.
Mister Johnson.
Not a question, but it's part of my testimony in front of the Public Service Commission. Pointed out to them that in August, when they start talking about regional haze coming from the power plants. My testimony was they should, they should look and see what's happening in, in our forests. And it's another example of what's going on, if you look up towards the Wind Rivers and you see all that haze, regional haze. It's from the forest fires as you indicated and some of that is coming over the Wasatch Front out of Utah because they have. Got a few fires down in Utah also, but the power plants get the blame for that and my testimony was that it's not all the power, power plants, it's mainly the. Forest fires that are occurring throughout the West.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson, point well taken and very, very accurate, thank you, any other questions? Up next will be Commissioner. Up next will be Commissioner Smith. Good morning, Commissioner Smith.
Morning. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll start with. With liaison work at the airport and many of you have spoken with Devon out at the airport, I received good news that. Funding is going to be in place. He's received more funding for our our eighteen million dollar total project for the new airport terminal. The good news is that it looks like if all goes well, seventeen point one four eight million of that will come from outside sources and the. Local match will be one point three five million of that eight hundred and fifty thousand would come from the county. So to build a new eighteen million dollar terminal, it looks like the county would need to to come up with eight hundred and fifty thousand. So. Excellent work on his part and it's a it's a ever moving, ever changing project and appreciate all the work that he's doing there with that as well. So. Thank you to him. Hospital, I continue to be impressed with the hospital and how they are handling the COVID and just continually working through the opportunities and programs, the grant money. That is available out there and the success that they are having compared to especially to other counties, other entities that are are working. So. Kudos to them. They continue to have special meetings when needed so that they can allocate the money and get contracts approved and things moving forward. As we know, much of that CARES Act money has to be spent by the end of December. And so seeing them continue to put in the hard work that they have to to make that work and make our hospital better. It's just kudos to them. I really appreciate all that they're doing. Also working on the abandoned vehicle lots, got an update for you from from John Liggett and his wife, the appreciate all that they're doing as well and. They've got ninety-five cars and trucks, forty-six motor homes, seventeen campers and ten miscellaneous trailers and things, utility trailers, that kind of thing that are out there. So way more than they would hope to ever have out there. And I think this case, the same is true for us as well as a county. So John daily owns and working with them and trying to get through the process, they've sent everything that they need. On to the sheriff's office to get it accounted for and so that they can start moving forward with it. So. Real happy with their work as well and appreciate what they're doing and John and the rest of the crew as well. So. Progress is being made there. It's not quite finished yet, but a lot more progress than some, as I mentioned in an email yesterday, that is going much. More quickly than some other projects I'm working on and many of you can guess what one in particular is. So. Finally, I guess it's election day. It's a get out and vote. Don't vote for me today. I'm not on the ballot. But if you're not going to vote for me, still get out and vote and have your voice heard. It's an important time. So. Best of luck to our candidates who are running, many a couple of who are sitting here, but best of luck all around and. Do exercise your right. It's a great country we live in and we have that opportunity. So. Please get out and vote, take that time today to do it. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any questions for Commissioner Smith? With no questions, I'll make a comment though with regard to today being a election day. I believe this is also a bicentennial year, I think of women's rights, if I'm not, Lauren's shaking her head. So were you going to cover any of this? I'm hope I'm not stealing any of your thunder.
No, I hadn't planned on it.
All right, thank you. But anyhow, it's bicentennial for women's rights. So it's a huge, huge. Not only here, but I think elections, whether it's general or primary, but the other piece of the caveat. And I gotta say this is grim my faces. Well, you might know this. Is years prior to a hundred years ago, a woman who came out here to Wyoming from Indiana. Was walking down the streets of one of our major cities in Wyoming and walked by a polling place. And walked in and voted and nobody said a word to her. Fifty years ago in Laramie, Wyoming. A young lady did that and there's a statue there in Wyoming recognizing that. And I believe her name is a Swain. Is it Linda? But anyhow, that's a little piece of history to add on to what's going on today. Wally, you remember all that?
Yeah, I do. I was walking down the street that same day and I I noticed her and as she walked in, I I wished her well.
Good deal, because nobody's tried to stop her, I guess. And when I found that out, I thought, wow, what a day, what a day. So anyway. Lauren, I do hope I didn't steal your thunder, because I know you keep an eye on those things. But thank you, Wally. Thank you, Jeff, and. Great day for women's rights. You've got to really be proud of that. Up next, Commissioner Shanefield. Thank you.
Sure, liaison work is going well. The museum director position is open. It's posted online at sweetwatermuseum.org. Mr. Mead with the museum is stepping up since Free Left and helping out. They are almost completely out of the old storage facility, which is a huge win and into the new building. So I just wanted to tell Jean. And his employees, thank you again for that. They're very excited. On the museum board is also about to begin a review of all of their policies and procedures. And so I will be working with Deputy County Attorney Daily on when we get to it or if we have any questions around that. Golden Hour Senior Center is doing busy good. They're very busy. The their fiscal year ends at the end of September and it looks like their funding is going to be okay for this year. They're taking the hardest hit in fundraising, which Jackie said is pretty much non-existent right now. They do have a fundraiser drive-through dinner planned for September and I will get more information out about that when it gets a little bit closer. They also just elected a new board president. So congratulations, Stacy Nelson. They've been really busy and have continued to serve thirty-five hundred to four thousand meals each month. And they've also had some turnover in staff with the retirement and then other staff leaving to go back to school. They're going to have two open positions that they're actually going to not fill. Due to funding cuts and the environment that we have. So I just wanted to commend them on choosing to, you know, to do more with less and understand that it does create a lot of stress on employees and the services, but. We really appreciate the services that they're providing throughout the community and are continuing to provide with less staff. Um, for our grants. Department Christina has submitted the CARES Act application to the Department of Health. That will assist Sweetwater County residents with rent and utility assistance. She's working on a new grant application with the clerk of district court and the county attorney's office to assist with COVID costs for jury trials that are coming up. And she's working on a second grant application for Southwest Counseling for COVID surveillance testing and retrofits in the Jonah Building to increase social distancing. She has also been working with auditors who are testing Sweetwater County's federal homeland security grants and payment in lieu of funding for compliance, so Pilt funding. For the compliance around it. Economic development. I met with Eric to work with the economic development grant. To assess the impacts related to Jim Bridger's retiring unit. This grant, oh, this is for Christine as well. This grant's going to be timed to incorporate the information for Middle Baxter Road Industrial Development Project also. I also had a meeting last week with Commissioner Windling and. The town of Wamset or the Joint Communication Board, the airport, the sheriff and Sweetwater County Fire. Around Gateway South Industrial Siding Project. So it looks like the total impact fees available for Gateway South. For both Carbon and Sweetwater County are going to be around six point one nine million. We're planning on meeting with Carbon County August twenty fifth. And Eric is working on getting the preliminary, the final preliminary numbers. It probably today and tomorrow. And economic development, Kayla's been working with Ashley Harpstree, who's the executive director for the Wyoming Taxpayers Association and a good friend of mine. She's going to be coming through Rock Springs. On the twenty seventh and is going to be doing an overview of the fiscal landscape and tax reform. For us and that will be from ten to eleven thirty AM, the Rock Springs City Council Chambers. And I've also been working the Connect Wyoming Broadband Initiative. Last Friday, the Wyoming Business Council approved a funding for thirty-seven projects. Through ten different service providers throughout the state for broadband development. This is a tune of about seventy-five million dollars through CARES funding. So these are some big projects that are really going to make a huge difference to our state. Across the entire state, it's going to be big for our small businesses and our ranchers and farmers and our students to bring everything up to. Higher level internet and connectivity. And the last thing that I wanted to bring up today is something that we've really been exploring at Simplot and working through what's being referred to as COVID fatigue. So there's a lot of people that are struggling. There's a lot of deaths. There's been some suicides. There's a lot of people that are really having a hard time right now. So I just wanted to urge everyone. To reach out to a friend, reach out to a coworker, maybe somebody that you may not typically reach out to, and you may help them get through a tough day and during this tough time. So that's all I have. There's any questions?
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner, any questions? Thank you. And up with final report, Commissioner Lloyd.
All right, I'll start with liaison work and Starbus. We we did meet last week. And just, but we are having an emergency meeting this week to discuss some of the route issues we're having now that we've gone back to the fixed route system. Based upon the limited number of people on the bus and looking to reinstate the rate. So we will be meeting as a board to discuss that. But they continue to do well. Our library, we had a board meeting last night and Jason and his crew continue to do a great job, especially in the area of outreach and programming in their library and. A very difficult and changing time. So. Southwest Counseling been in contact with Linda about a couple of issues, buildings, and then she's still awaiting what the cuts are exactly that they're talking about in the mental health area. We know is at least ten percent, if not more, but every time they go to have a meeting, the meeting gets canceled. So at this point, she knows there's cuts, but doesn't know where they're coming. So they're continuing to work through that. Next meeting, we'll be ready to roll with our first strategic planning workshop after our meeting, if that's okay. If that's we've talked. We thought it would be good to start there in September. We'll move forward with that. I think we have received all of the department heads and elected officials. Comments and thought processes on there. And I do appreciate them for all their work and really being able to come up with a process to help us plan and I. And there's a lot of tricks and things that will make it difficult, but I do think it's good that we get some concepts rolling. I'm just want to thank a couple of people, the custodial workers, you know, we've talked about them during the COVID time, but the building continually looks great. And they're doing a great job in maintaining and ensuring the safety of the building in this COVID crisis. So thanks to the custodial crew. What's that? Okay. And then also a thanks to Cindy and her crew at the at the elections. It's a big job to get the elections up and going. And I appreciate all their efforts and work in making it happen today and congratulate them on their works and efforts and I'll give them congratulations next time, seeing how it goes today. But. But a but a big thanks to them for all their work. But I also want to just echo something Jeff said, get out and vote today. I already did first thing this morning and. And just, and I also want to wish luck to our two folks that are running today. But I also want to wish luck to all of our, everyone that's put their name in the hat. Being a public servant and an elected official is. Definitely not all as easy as it looks and is all it's cracked out to be. There's a lot of work, effort, good times and bad times. So anyone that's willing to put their name in that hat. And throw it into the ring deserves kudos, no matter what their efforts are at the end of the day. So I do appreciate them and I do appreciate and hope for a good turnout in this in this election today. Obviously, like Jeff said, this is your chance to voice and and have a voice. So please get out and 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 vote today. And then outside of that, have met with various department heads and elected officials over the last couple of weeks. Mess with Assessor Devis, Treasure Slaughter. Direct Grant Director Christina Marcel, I've met with Gary McLean out of HR. Met with a had a great talk with John Daleon and Lauren joined us for that yesterday on some statute questions I had on various things. That with Clerk Lane, that with Bonnie Berry, the accounting manager and Devon Brewbaker, the airport director, just to name a few, and then a lot of constituent calls in the last week. So. I do appreciate everyone for voicing and and being there. So. And I guess, you know, since I'm I'm in the kudo mood today, want to throw one last kudo to someone we've never, I've never given kudos to, but deserves it, and that's Sally. Whenever I need anything, she's always there to give me information and help. She does a lot for us and I just think every once in a while. Everyone deserves a kudo and she deserves one a lot more than I've ever given her one, but she thanks to Sally for all she's done. So that's my report. For the week, is there any questions for me?
Commissioners, any questions for Commissioner Lloyd?
Yeah, I I think his comments about Sally are overblown. She she just left Jeff and I in our in our offices, you know, so I don't know whether that's deserved.
Knew that was coming. Knew that was coming. Anyhow, thank you, Commissioner Johnson. Well noted.
I wouldn't wait till after the votes happen today to make comments like that.
Good point, Roy.
Any other, any other comments or questions for Commissioner Lloyd on his report, good report? You did bring up a couple of things if I might comment. First of all, when you talked about the. Southwest Counseling and they're receiving ten percent cuts from the state based on our commissioner's call this week. From Rennie McKay, the governor seriously looking at the next level, which is another ten percent cut. So. If that's take place, I'm sure we could hear about it this week or first part of next week. So. I truly believe that's on the plate and probably going to happen sooner than later. And that type of thing. But then also for you as commissioners know, Monday, they have joint revenue meeting. And I'll be testifying, I'll get some information from Dave Davis as to regard to some of the. When they're talking, they're talking about additional tax revenue and those types of things, that revenue meeting and. With some things that are occurring, special delizera and those types of things. We the legislature's got to realize they're going to do something to help backfill the loss of revenue for counties, cities and towns. So. I'll be testifying. It'd be a short testimony because it will be on Zoom through. The Legislative Revenue Committee and that type of thing, but. We we are beginning through the County Commissioner's Association, working on things like that. And then, of course, next thing that comes really quickly to mind is the next. Version of the CARES Act money, which I believe is referenced as the heroes, it's tied up right now at the federal level between in Congress. There's in that there is language to make the present one point two five million more flexible so that. Through some supportive way that will help small towns, cities and counties get some money out of that. So hopefully there's some flexibility that will come out of that. Fourth CARES Act as well as in that fourth CARES Act, there's more money for city towns and counties as well. So. As much as it's very hard to recover any revenue right now under the previous released CARES Acts. There may be some hope in the future if if our federal legislators can congressional people can. Sit down and start thinking about truly what's good for all the individuals rather than just a few. So with that. Any other comments, commissioners, for fish commissioner comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Johnson.
Just following up with what you just said, and I'd urge you when you're on that conference call to keep this in mind. There there are counties and there are cities and towns that have seen this coming and have done great things as to reducing their costs. And now the state and the state, in my opinion, has done nothing in the past to see this coming. And now. The first place they look is to cut cities, towns and counties and. I think it's unfortunate. There's it's hindsight to to say the things I'm saying, but they should have been doing this. And maybe we'd be in better shape today than than we are as far as the state goes.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson. You're exactly right. In fact, in our committee call yesterday. Our executive director Jeremiah Ryman brought up the fact that he wants to talk about what Sweetwater County has done over the years to. Have some foresight. And it's exactly what we've you, everybody else that we're talking about of what we've done to not grow government, but to. Narrow government down and be more efficient and effective. So so he's been reading our data. We've been. So, so he's been reading our data we've been sending to him and talking about it. And I think if the opportunity presents it for him, I think it'll be mentioned that there are counties out there doing just what you said, but the state is not. And that's obvious when you observe the lack of willingness to look at ways to generate new revenue that, that will help impact cities, towns and counties. So thank you for your comments. Certainly will do that. Thank you. Anything else during commissioner comments? With that, commissioners, our first agenda item is scheduled for nine forty, so it's nine twenty. So let's take a ten fifteen minute break. Let's be back here and operational at nine thirty-five, please. Did you come over and say hi, Roy?
Okay, welcome back, commissioners. I believe we're back, I'd like to call this meeting back to order and we'll start our business for the day. First up is, is Tab C, which I brought in from the last meeting, which is basically a lagoon, the Lagoon Project suspension discussion and potential action brought in from our last meeting that I notified all the commissioners to be here for an action item. So at this point in time, basically to, what I was sensing is to authorize the Director of Public Chair Works and County Attorney to prepare a letter of suspension and present it for board approval at the next meeting. So that's the agenda item and commissioners, at this point in time, is questions or anything along that line?
Mr. Chairman, I, I'd like to hear from our Deputy County Attorney.
Sounds good. Thank you. Mr. DeLeon?
Sure. Commissioner Johnson, Mr. Chairman. So just, just to be clear, this, this item was put on the agenda for today. And as the chairman identified, the discussion was to put it on the agenda for a discussion and potential action in terms of pausing the, the Lagoon Project. And we, we've had some discussions about, about how to proceed. And I just want to be clear that there is a contract with the architect in this case. And in that contract and the board, since, since the commission, since the county has entered, already entered into this contract, that can't be, can't go back on that decision. That was an appropriate decision. The only, the options available to the commission are to follow the contract that is in place. That contract that is in place has a termination or suspension clause. And that termination or suspension clause requires before there would be a suspension that there would have to be notice provided to the architect. And so if, if the board does consider some action today, it would be to follow that contract, it would be for staff. And I assume that would involve Gene and myself to look at providing a written documentation, written notice if the board were to choose to look at a suspension. And that notice would then be presented to the commission at the next board meeting. And so again, just to, just to reiterate, to follow the contract, any, any written notice is required in advance. There are a few things that I think, again, staff, probably Gene would want to just clarify or what are the, what is entailed specifically with a, a suspension? And how, how does that look for the architect? What, what costs, if any, are associated with both suspension and termination? But based on the notice that was provided last week, I think the only thing on the table isn't termination. I think the, the language used was that a pause was being considered. And therefore, I think the, the commission today would be in discussion of the suspension component of the contract.
Thank you, John DeLeon. Any other questions? Thank you, John Dillon. Any other questions for the attorney, Mr. John, Commissioner Johnson?
Yeah, I just like one other question, John. You know, I, I think that the, the issue still is, has never been divided between the two buildings. From the architect's standpoint, would it be possible to suspend only the portion of that? For example, my view would be to suspend the, the fire portion, a portion of that facility. Is that a possibility per the contract that we have with the contractor, with the architect?
Commissioner Johnson, Mr. Chairman, absolutely it is. The suspension can come in either form. And so it would be up to you as commissioners to direct staff to, to organize a notice of suspension as you deemed fit. And you're absolutely right. You know, when you're talking about, I think Gene would have more information on some of the details, but you know, when you look at potentially cutting the cost in half, when you look at potentially the, some of the costs associated that could be recovered through the grant. When you get down to those final numbers, it's, it's a substantial difference. And those are things I think for the substantively for the commission to consider.
Thank you, John.
The reason I asked, the reason I asked that question is I, I think that there's a possible unanimous opinion of this commission. I could be guessing wrong, that definitely there's, there's no consideration to go forward with the full, the full, both buildings. So that's why I asked that. And I think by making that decision, we would curtail any continuing, continuing costs that the architects might be going through with one of the buildings that would be unnecessary at this point in time until some future date or whenever.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson. Other questions, commissioners?
Yeah, I have a couple. Sorry, Lauren, you can go ahead and go first.
Mr. Shanefield, please.
Mr. Deleon, how much notice is there involved in the contract that we currently have?
Commissioner Shanefield, there is a seven day notice requirement. So it has to be written. And then it is a seven day notice requirement. So what, what that means is whatever decisions the commission were to make. So for example, if the commission were to make a decision to suspend half of the one building, not the other, then staff would then prepare that notice, have the discussions with the architect. Seeing what that would entail, that would be presented at the next meeting. And then once the board and or chairman were to sign that, then seven days from that point, the, the, the project would be suspended as directed by the commission.
Send your question, Lauren.
It does. I also, I guess in, if we were to choose to move forward with suspending, I would think that we could authorize the chairman to sign and move forward today instead of having to wait until the next meeting. I don't want to continue to drag all of this on and, and continue to waste our staff's time as well as architect time if we do choose to pause on it. So that, that's my opinion.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Legursky.
Can I speak up on two, two topics I think need to be clarified?
Sure.
Depending on if we're talking about putting a pause on things, I don't believe, and I, we, John and I would need to look at the contract on this. If we drop one of the buildings, I don't think that would require anything. That's just a change of scope of the original contract. That's not a suspension of anything. That's a change of scope in the contract. We need to go through that and vet that with the contract, but that's how I read it. The other thing that is, as a point to Commissioner Shanefield is we're very close to having everything done. And I think pausing the project at this point and then picking it up at a later date would be a disservice to what staff has put in. And also the money that we put in because it would actually cost us more money to start the project back up and go forward. Right now we have, oh, thirty to thirty-five people working on this. And if you pause it for two months, six months, eight months, whatever you guys decide. And you try to get all those guys, all those individuals on the same page, going in the same direction again, that is going to cost more money. And we need to keep that in mind. We're very close to having construction drawings done. There are some final permitting that needs to be done. I don't believe that is a waste of my time that that's the staff we're talking about. But it would be a way to be able to put a final project on pause and having everything completely done.
Thank you, Gene. Any questions on, for Gene on that, commissioners?
Yeah.
Mr. Johnson, you, you rang first.
Just a question, Gene. You, you deal with the architects. Are you saying that it would be no benefit to the architects if we were to? Well, maybe what you're saying is if we go forward with, with proposal for bids on both buildings, that, that doesn't enter into it. But as far as the architects, the, that you're talking about both buildings would be done as far as the architects are involved. Is that correct?
Correct. The original contract was for both buildings, all the land associated with. So that's what we've been working forward to for the last year plus. So separating them out is a possibility, but right now what my recommendation would be to be is to finish all buildings. And if you choose to pause at that point, we can divide it out, but don't stop the project right now as far as the design goes, because that will be, that'll have consequences down the road.
Thanks, Gene.
Thank you. Questions, commissioner, so far? Well, you had some before Lauren.
Yeah. And the first question, my first couple of questions are probably for John. Gene may be able to help out with it or probably could. Our current contract, if I remember right, is really for two things, to complete the building plans and to complete the bidding process. Am I correct?
There's actually three components to that. Well, there's actually more subcomponents, but if you look at it as three different components, one is to complete the plans and all the permitting associated with it. The other is the bidding and then the, the final one is the construction management portion of the contract.
Okay. And at this point, Gene, my question, this is a question for you, Gene, is you, give me an estimate of how close you think they are to have that building renderings done?
They, we're at, had planned on sending these to the contractors on August twenty-fifth. So that's how close we're done, to being done. Literally a week away.
Okay, of, of having the final drawings.
Final drawings done. Some of the permitting will still lag because we're doing permitting through the BLM and other things for some minor storm sewer stuff. But other than that, everything drawing wise will be done.
I am, and then as far as the bidding process, have they gone out for bids already?
No, you cannot go out for bids without completed construction drawings. But that plan was to let them to the contractors on August twenty-fifth, collect bids on September fifteenth and send them to you guys for approval on October sixth.
So I guess my question then, are we at a point then where we could finish the building drawings? Because to me, I'd hate to put a pause on it before we had the completed drawings. He's like, I, I agree with you. It would be hard to say, hey, we're going to go back and finish these drawings sixteen months later. It would be easier to shout them once they were complete, then go back to them if they were complete, in my opinion. Would you agree with that?
I, I would agree. The only thing they would, you would run the risk of is if there is a major code redo in plumbing or building code or something like that, if we postpone it too, too, too many years. Then have to go back and look through those and make them a cold compliance review and.
Okay. Are we, are we at a point, Gene, to, the contractually, we could provide the notice to stop the bidding from going out and incurring that eighty thousand dollar cost in our contract?
I, I think we could. That, that is one of the clarifications that we need to talk about because if next meeting, no, because it'll be September eighth is when that actual seven days will take effect.
Any?
I'm gonna marinate, then I'm gonna come back to a few more. But Gene and John, thank you so much for.
Other questions for Gene, commissioners or John?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to, Gene, can you remind us where we're at dollar wise, what we've put into this so far and?
One point two. I don't, I, I can look up an exact number, but it's about one point two million.
And if we paused today, didn't finish the drawings, does it save us any money?
Not very little because the problem with that is we have to pay the contractor up through what he has completed. And I don't know what that exactly is because I got it going two weeks ago. So, you know, we're only one week away from having the drawings done.
Yeah. So I, my comment, I guess, would be what I've said before. We've started this process. We have voted to do this portion of the process. I, I don't, I don't feel as though it's obligating us to anything. I agree that financial times are difficult and perhaps building this building is not the time right now to do that. But I think that we need to finish what we started. And I've, I've, I've said that from the beginning that we need to finish this portion of the process. And I'm, I'm a little disappointed too. We didn't go out and find out about at least the grant money and, and funding. That would have been something else as, as well to find out. Like I look at the hospital and the, the millions of dollars that they've received in grant money to take care of projects. And so I think it's a missed opportunity. So two steps there, certainly we need to finish the drawings. That's ridiculous to be a week away. It's not going to save us anything. And in the long run, it will save, it will cost us a lot more to do that. And then secondly, I, I think perhaps we should revisit the, revisit the funding. And I think that's something that we should have looked at as well and taken the opportunity to, to look at and have our staff do. So those are my thoughts.
Thank you. Any other comments, commissioners? So Gene, just for me, why other commissioners think a little bit. So the drawings would complete a phase of the project and it'd be a good point of pause. Is that what I'm hearing?
In, in the grand scheme of things, it'd be the best place to, if you want to pause the project without bidding it, yes.
Thank you very much. And that, and to regard to Commissioner Smith regarding the loan, the loans and that type of thing. I, I think that's something we can go back and, and look at it another time. But I think for now we'll, we'll stay status quo for that unless someone feels differently. All right. Any other questions for?
Can I add something to that?
Sure, sure.
I guess last meeting I was a little confused. And that's partially my fault for not asking enough questions. But with the additional funding, Commissioner Smith brought up the hospital. If you look at what Devon Brewbaker's been able to do, looking for additional funding out of the airport. I mean, an eighteen million dollar project that's going to cost the county eight hundred thousand dollars. I'm not saying I can do that, but you guys pay me to do a job. And that is not a burden for me to go out and look for extra money and do those things and to try to find out so that we can get this project completed with the least cost possible to the county.
Thank you, Gene.
Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Johnson.
I, I couldn't agree more with what Jeff just said about that financing. I, I, and, and Gene also is saying the same thing. We ask staff to do these things. We hire great staff. They do their job and then all of a sudden we stop it. I think that was one of the biggest blunders we've made since I've been a commissioner. It would have been, cost us nothing, nothing to find out what, what funding might be available and what the cost of that funding might be. But instead of even looking at what it was, we stopped it. And I think we, I agree with Jeff. If we want to revisit something, we should revisit, revisit that decision.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson.
The, the other thing that we need to think is if, if we push out the bid date to something in the future, that's not a pause. That's not a, it's, it's more of a contractual thing that we just need to push it out within reason. You know, say you guys want to postpone this until January or something like that for a bid in April. Or, you know, for a start date in April or something like that. That's more of a contractual thing that we can deal with with the architecture. I don't think that's a pause thing that requires something from you guys.
Thank you, Gene. Very much. Other questions, commissioners? Other questions? What's the commissioner's pleasure?
Can I go back and just ask a question, if possible? Um, I guess, Gene, just going back, I guess, just as I sit here, the big thing for me is like I said, I, I am pro finishing the plans. To me, I've never not wanted to finish the plans because even last meeting, we were, you know, we were within striking distance of being done. And it made no sense to stop drawing at that point and move forward. Um, the, the bidding process, if we were to, if we were to put a pause on that would be a save of about what, eighty thousand dollars?
Correct.
Okay. Is there a way to meet in the middle and, and maybe do something where we pause at the bidding process? But even do consider looking at, relooking at going out for the grant? And then, and if that, if the grant's available there, then relooking at opening that back up after, with, using that as a reason to maybe lift up as a pause. Is there any validity in that kind of a, a middle ground for everyone? Does that make sense?
Commissioner, what? I guess it is. But with the vote that happened last two weeks ago to pause that, that's where the confusion started for me. Because we paused looking for money. And there's discussion could happen. And, and I think that's where the confusion lies in me is, you know, yeah, that's a middle ground, but I don't really call that a middle ground. I call that my job.
No, and, and I think at the la, I believe at the last meeting, there was a vote to put a pause in the lawn, in the loan grant application, not to, to follow through with it. And then the other piece that added confusion for Eugene, I believe, was when we said we'd bring to this meeting a discussion and action to bring a pause or suspend, whatever terminology is of, of moving forward with the project. In this case, I would say the pause or suspension, the best time would be at the completion of the drawings and that type of thing to finish that piece. The other part, going back to Commissioner Lloyd, when he says there's a way to revisit and, and take a look at working with staff again and, and looking for the loan grant thing. I, I believe that's all a possibility, but it would take, there was a vote on it to do, and the vote went through to two was no, not to do it. So it would take a no vote to bring it to the a motion to bring it back up. At a later, you know, and I'd suggest that's the case would be next meeting or something and they can decide that under other, if they want to put it back on. I have no problem with that for that discussion. But that's how that can be handled, Commissioner Lloyd, if, if that's a desire to have that conversation again with all five commissioners and I, and that type of thing. Am I correct, John, in what I said somewhat?
Chairman, that was, that was perfect.
Thank you. So I think going back to, we'll leave loans grant question over to one side for now and then go back to just the item on the agenda is commissioners, I said I'd put it on the agenda to see if we wanted to put a pause into this project. In other words, move towards authorizing the Public Works Director and Attorney to prepare a letter to notify the architect in the pause. And I'm sensing if we did move that direction, that pause probably should indicate ending this phase, as Commissioner Smith said, which is the drawings. Finish them, do not, and that's where it ends. So I think just trying to be a good listener and putting the pieces together, I think that's what I'm, I'm hearing outside of do nothing and continue the normal track of what we're headed on, on building the project with funding coming out of reserves.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Shanefield.
I would like to make a motion that we complete the drawings and put a pause on the project. Bidding and construction management until we readdress in January of 2021. This would allow for the opportunity for us to readdress the USDA funding as we see fit due to the financial issues that we're seeing right now. I think we'll know a little bit more in January how things are looking. And that would allow us time to continue with. holding on the project and being physically responsible as well.
Thank you, Commissioner Schoenfield, I'm gonna go back to the motion for a minute, just as I was listening. John, Attorney Davion, please follow closely with me. Orange, Commissioner Schoenfield made a motion to pause until January of twenty twenty-one. I believe that motion probably should have read that to authorize you and the Public Director to prepare a letter of notification to the architect of the pause at the end of the drawings, completed the drawing design. Is that sufficient?
So, it, it is sufficient, I think, I think you can make that motion how, how you deem fit. Yeah, I, I guess, the motion, as I understand it, is for for staff to prepare a motion or a notice to suspend, and with a January timeframe in mind. I, I, I'm not sure that the January timeframe, and so I, I would ask for clarification if that was part of the mo, the motion in particular, I don't know that it is it would be necessary, but if, if it is, we can, we can put that in the notice. If it's, if that was just dicta, meaning helping to explain the, that it could be addressed at a later time, then it wouldn't necessarily need to be included in the notice, so that clarification would need to be made.
Maybe, maybe what we need to do is have, I know what Commissioner Schoenfield is presenting, so Commissioner Schoenfield, if you withdraw your motion, I'll entertain a motion. I believe, I would like to entertain a motion that the Lagoon project, that we authorize the County Attorney, as well as Public, or Assistant County Attorney, as well as Public Works Director, to prepare a letter of notice to the architect of pausing Lagoon project and putting that letter, list for signature at the next meeting.
Mr. Chairman, that doesn't do the, the completion portion of that, to complete the drawings.
Yes, and that should be included, thank you, Commissioner Johnson, to bring a pause after completing the drawings.
But, can I?
Can I clarify, I, I think we need to add drawings and permits, let's have a complete package.
All right, drawings, I would entertain that. No, let's, let's get it in there and get it right, so, so it's there.
So, Gene, do we need to, do we need to do that? Is the architect done at that point? I mean, what are we pausing with the architect? Aren't we, isn't the architect finished then?
Pausing in the bidding process.
So nothing, so nothing really with the architect?
No.
So, so we're not, to, to tell, why do we need to give the architect any seven day notice that we're not, we're not doing anything? We're saying, architect, finish your, your job, and then we're gonna pause after that, there's, there's nothing to pause, they're finished, so I don't, I don't see the need for this motion.
By what the contract says, because they are still in charge of bidding and they're doing the construction management on the project. But I don't think that requires a pause, I don't know, that's maybe a question for John. I think that's a, a, a contract issue.
Yeah, that's kind of what I gathered from previously.
We have to bid it, we just came up with those dates that fit, the design schedule and the bidding schedule.
And then we decide when we want, let, let the architect finish their work, and then when they're finished, we will decide when we want to go out to bid. That's, that's kind of, I, I don't know that there's a need for a motion here, but Mr. Davion, what do you think?
May I, may I add something else? Commissioner Jeff, I, I agree with you a hundred percent, I, I don't think there's need for any action at this point in time. I think we go forward until the next step is required, and then that decision should made, be made at that point in time. I don't think there's any decision made, needs to be made today.
Mr. Davion?
Mr. Smith, and Mr. Legursky can certainly expound. But, yeah, the, the architect's contract is, is pretty expansive. It's a very long contract and does, does address a very wide scope. And so it is, it would be, of course, the Commission's decision in terms of if it's necessary or not, but as Mr. Legursky identified, it is primarily the drawings, but does the architect does remain involved through other processes. But that is a, there is a natural line there, as Mr. Legursky identified.
Isn't that at our direction to move forward? Don't we set the dates going forward for bids or anything else, construction management?
So, again, the, the contract does have dates, and yes, you would participate in those, but the contract does go beyond just, just the drawings.
Thank you. So I would, I'd still go back to the original, just to, if we get a majority to do it, I would go back to a emotion, so it's on the record, that the project, following the permits, the drawings, that the architect is notified that the project will be suspended, and have the County Attorney and the Public Works Directors to prepare any documentation so that we can approve it as a board at the next meeting.
I'll move.
Is there a second?
Second, but then I have discussion.
Oh, definitely, always discussion afterwards, Commissioner Lloyd. All right, I have a motion and a second. Discussion, Mr. Lloyd?
Yeah, Gene, I want to go back to something that Jeff started on, and just make sure I'm, I'm right, so, or I'm clear, I guess would be the better way to put it, would be, and then maybe, and John may have to help with this too. So, do we have the ability in the contract to say extended, like, we're, I, I guess what Jeff was saying, like, saying we're not gonna move forward on the bids until this day, without doing a motion? Or are those dates in the contract cemented enough that we have no, but if we don't want to go toward biddings, we've got to make the motion? That makes sense?
It, it does, and I'm gonna rely on John for this, but if you, if you actually read the contract under Article nine, it talks about termination or suspension. And it gives, you know, termination for, or suspension because we failed to pay them, or anything like that. But it also talks about, I'm just gonna read it, if the owner suspends the project, the architect shall be compensated for services performed prior to notice of such suspension. When the project is resumed, the architect shall be compensated for expenses incurred in interruption and resumption of the architect's services. And then it goes on to say the architect's fees for the remaining service and the time schedule shall be adjusted, equitably adjusted. And then it goes on to say, if the architect suspends a project, the owner shall be compensated. You know, there isn't really any hard dates in here that I have seen in reviewing this, other than the only date that's in there is the date that we signed the contract with them, and the date of their original proposal, which was September eighteen, two thousand nineteen. There is no other dates that are predicated on building, and that's, and that's typical, because we get together and we look at the bidding atmosphere, we look at other factors, we look at how long it's gonna take to complete these, and you don't know that upfront.
Thank you. Mr. Lloyd, anything else?
Not right now, but I'm, I don't know. Thinking, the smoke, the alarms are gonna go off in this office soon, so.
Well, we're to the point where we've got a motion and a second, if there's any, no more discussion, it's time to call for the question.
Mr. Chairman? We still have other discussion.
Yeah.
I, I just, I just, I think that I understand the, the intent of this. I don't, but again, I don't think it's necessary, so I, you know, I think that it's our, from what I'm hearing, it's our, as the Commission, our right, our obligation to decide on the timeline of things with the contract. And so we say thank you for all this information you've gotten us, thanks for the permitting, the drawings. We'll let you know, and we're ready to go out to bid. And so I think that just sending that and letting, you know, pausing or disrupting the flow with the architect, I'm not sure that this is necessary, so that's what I'm hearing. So while I understand the intent, I, I don't think that this is, is necessary, but that's, that's my opinion.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman? I think that it's been pretty clear that we have not been clear with our staff and the public around this project in general. I want to, I want this, the intent of this motion is to be very clear that we are holding on this project due to financial restrictions, and that we do intend to revisit it. And I think that, I think that the intent behind all of that is, is the clarity of such.
Thank you. Other discussion, Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, the issue that I think is, is critical, and I think the architect understands this, is that, in my opinion, I would not go forward with both buildings. And, and I think that I would be willing to pause, obviously, that, that portion of it. But I do not think that we've got adequate information to make the decision on the, on the primary building, the Public Works Building. And that was caused by this Commission, because I think originally, we were gonna take that money out of reserves, but I think there is, would have been an opportunity to, to borrow money at a very reasonable interest rate, less than three percent. And we don't even know that yet, so I, I think, like I said, I'd be willing to, to pause indefinitely, in my opinion, the way it's been designed, because I, I think there are some problems with the design that I've seen relative to the, to the fire portion of that architectural rendering that we, we have. But I, I, we're not even gonna do that again, we're gonna, and we're just gonna pause everything without any further discussion. And I, I don't, I, I, I just don't think we have enough information to do that. So I'm along with Jeff, I, I don't think any actions required at this point in time.
Hey, thank you, any other comments?
I hit the wrong button when I went to mute. I guess, two things. My concern is, there enough language in the contract, if we weren't to vote no today, that we would not go into bidding? Because I don't feel like we should be going into bidding at this point. And the second question is, part of Lawrence's first motion, which has changed, was a discussion about possibly having staff look at possible grants during that pause point. Would that be a separate motion or a separate discussion?
Could be, it would be a separate motion on another discussion.
Roy, I think that would be a good idea. I, I think somehow we need to see what's available to us, and that's, that would be a way to do it, would give us further information.
And, and that could, that could very well be, if, if proposed, that it be put on the next agenda. Anything else, Roy?
I think I've taken, but I think I've asked enough, thank you.
Okay, is it time for the question, Commissioners? We have a motion and a second, time for Commission, or for a second, or I'm sorry, a call for the questions, so all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Could we have a roll call, please?
Yes, roll call, vote, okay, I'll start out, Commissioner Schoenfield?
Yes.
Commissioner Lloyd?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
No.
Mr. Johnson?
No.
Mr. Winling, yes, motion carries three, two. So you have some direction. Mr. Davion and Mr. Legursky, and we'll sign any paperwork at the next meeting in two weeks, so that'll be on the agenda, thank you.
I would like, at the end, I don't know if this is right for me to talk or not, but I do think we should look at putting on the agenda, having staff do look at some of that grant availability money while we are on pause before we re, re discuss views that could be an affecting factor of this decision.
And you're exactly right, Commissioners, Lloyd, so we'll request, I know Sally's aboard, that be put on the next agenda. Thank you.
Can I?
Chairman, I think that would require some, some action based on what we have done previously, and ask John for clarification on that.
You, you're exactly right, it would take a motion from a no vote to or a request from a no vote, I believe, to put it on, John, the exact.
So, Mr. Chairman, the, I think that it did come from a no vote with Commissioner Lloyd, so I think that it has come from the right location. I think the, it can be a motion to reconsider the funding, be put on the agenda for next week, and I think that motion could come from Commissioner Lloyd.
Mr. Lloyd, you wish to make that motion?
Yeah, I would make the motion to relook at potential grant funding for the building at the next meeting. Grant your loan funding.
Have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Johnson, any further discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, do we, do we need to, does that need to be waited, waited on until next time? Can we not do that this time? I mean, we, we put down a, on the agenda to talk about the project today in general terms, and I think that that's a something.
Last week, so.
John?
I think it's appropriate to put that on for the next meeting to have the appropriate notice and avoid a two thirds vote.
Okay, is that any question, Commissioner Smith?
I guess I would just comment then to say not, you know, Commissioner Lloyd said grant money, but I would say fund, just encompass all funding sources to find out what our options are.
Exactly, and I.
I think he, I think he did say that after.
Yeah, I, I hit my mute button as I said that.
Yeah, I thought so. No, I think it's, it's not just for the project, it's where does this county align in regard to qualifying for grants or loans through the USDA, I believe, or USDA, is that correct?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
So what I brought before you guys two weeks ago was a pre-application to the USDA. So if we're looking at that and other funding, do those need to be two separate topics? Or can we encompass a vote into the one to reverse the previous vote? Or not putting in a pre-application and then looking at other funding, it's just a discussion?
We can do that, I believe we can do that at the next meeting, and I think this is just to, to get it onto the next meeting, Gene.
Okay.
Can be part of it, thank you. Okay, any other discussion? We have a motion by Commissioner Lloyd, and a second by Commissioner Johnson.
I have discussion real quick.
Yeah.
I, I just want to make it clear that I'm still not a proponent for this building, I'm a proponent of looking at options. And if we can find a way to do this building dirt cheap, free, I do believe we owe that to our constituents. And I, I, no, but I mean, I don't want to spend a ton of money on the building, and I'm gonna be very.
I am with you, I'm totally with you, and that's what I was trying to say two weeks ago and a month ago. That I am exactly in the same boat as that, that I'm not willing to spend twenty-one million dollars on building a building out of our funds. But there are opportunities out there, and we voted two weeks ago to not look at those opportunities. We've, we're voting to, we voted to stop the process, which I, you know, after spending one point two million dollars. So come on over, Roy, we're happy to have you on the.
But, but I will say that, but I, I still worry about it, but I do believe down the road, we need to look at other options. And if this building doesn't go through, do we look at current industrial buildings? Because I believe in all of the maintenance parts, the, the, the auto shop has to be looked at sooner or later due to safety. So, but at, at this point, I'm still worried about finances, but I do think we need to have Gene continue to look.
Thank you.
And the other thing that's important to, to look at about with all of these is by consolidating the facilities, you know, 16 months ago, is staff reductions and, and improving efficiencies. So we can't get that lost in because that was the original reason we went down this road.
Thank you, Gene. All right, we have a motion and a second to put it on the agenda for our next meeting and carry on the conversation or discussion. Um, any other further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. So Sally will put that on the agenda for the next, uh, meeting as well. All right, moving on, our next item on our agenda is tab D, which is the Community Fine Arts Center Board Appointment. And, uh, let me take a look, I looked at that, uh. Here we go. The Community Fine Arts Center Board has a three-year term. Due to K Womack being removed from the Community Art Fine Arts Board due to a lack of attendance per board bylaws. Um, this creates the, uh, absence. So therefore, uh, or the vacancy, I'm sorry. So this appointment will fulfill the remainder of the term through seven, one, twenty-two. Um, new applicant is Jacob Muldowney. So I believe, uh, Fine Arts Center Board, which is the library. Is that you, Commissioner Floyd?
It is. I feel like I've already talked too much today, but I will make this motion to appoint Jacob Muldowney to the Community Fine Arts Center Board on a three-year term.
Okay, we have him and it, and it's a, to fill out, finish out a term. Is that correct?
Yes, it is.
Thank you. Uh, we have a motion to appoint, uh, Jacob Muldowney, Downey to the vacant, uh, and, uh, position as well as, uh, for the remainder of the term. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Shanefield. Any further discussion commissioners? No further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign, motion carries. Thank you commissioners. Tab E, request commission to approve and chairman sign the mutual aid agreement with Wamsetter Fire Department. And I believe with us today for that discussion is, uh, Mr. Bornazian, our fire warden. Good morning, Mike.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman.
How are you today?
It's fine.
Good. Uh, I believe you have a, uh, mutual aid agreement that you would like to present this morning.
Yes, I do. With Mr. Bailey on's, uh, uh, help and, uh, drafting this, uh, to meet legal language, um, the county, uh, has utilized and relied upon the Wamsetter Fire Department to respond to emergency calls for service in Eastern Sweetwater County for many, many years. As they are just a town volunteer fire department with a very small staff. And I felt it was time that, um, as I continue to try to work on gaining mutual aid agreements with all the entities to support our county. Um, it was time to fill this gap and get a mutual aid agreement with them. And in addition to that, um, we've been able to secure a housing option for us if we need to remain overnight in Wamsetter. It's a long drive back after a long day of firefighting and it's not safe for anybody. Uh, so they have a, uh, a residence they made available to us. It's mentioned in, referenced in the mutual aid agreement, um, which is a, a huge asset for us in addition to, to upcoming potential impact projects. Uh, definitely probably would utilize as we go forward. So, uh, like I said, uh, Mr. Daily on drafted the language, worked with the other attorney and, uh, myself and, uh, Chief Davis, Wamsetter Fire supported. So we're asking you if you would do the same.
Thank you, Mr. Bornazian. Um, are there questions for either John or John Daley Allen or Mr. Bornazian? Commissioners? No questions. Uh, what's your pleasure commissioners? You're muted. Commissioners, we're to a point where someone, if they want to, can make a motion.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Commissioner Shanefield.
Let me make a motion to approve the mutual aid agreement for fire protection between Sweetwater County and Wamsetter and authorize the chairman to sign.
Okay, we have a motion. Second. Second, second by Commissioner Smith. Further discussion commissioners? No further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Our two.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Oppose, same sign, motion carries. Appreciate it. Moving on for tab F. We have, uh, a ten-ten with Y dot State Transportation Improvement Program. And, uh, we have a representative from Y dot. So at this point, uh, I'll turn the floor over as a Y dot rep out there. There. Randy, good morning.
Good morning commissioners. Appreciate the opportunity to be here and talk to you. Um, trying to figure out all the technology here. I, I do have a PowerPoint, uh, that was sent in. So hopefully that can be brought up or I can share my screen. See if I can make that work here.
Yes, yours just showed up.
Able to see that?
Yep.
Excellent. We also have with us, uh, um, remotely some other members of Y dot, uh, of our district staff and local representation. So if, if there's a question that I can't answer, I may refer to them. Um, but really what I would like to speak to you guys today about is, uh, kind of threefold. We want to, and we appreciate the opportunity to come in and, and discuss these things. Um, first, we want to talk about where Y dot is, our funding models and, uh, kind of where we sit in today's landscape. Um, and then go over our STIP, which is the State Transportation Improvement Program that is a six-year outlook. And then, and what projects we have in the Sweetwater area going on now and through 2026. And then look at some partnering opportunities that we have, um, coming up that for local governments. So with that, I am Randy Merritt. Um, I'm an interim district engineer. Uh, we, uh, are other district engineers out with some health issues. So I've been on loan this summer down in the, the District Three area. Um, again, so if I don't have all the information and background, uh, please forgive me and we'll try to find it for you. Uh, there's a lot of information here. I'm going to go through fairly quickly. Um, this, uh, presentation was also sent, uh, to, uh, the county commissioner. So I believe you have it. You can go back through it at your leisure. If you have questions, please, uh, let us know. If there's at some point you want me to stop and, uh, reiterate or, uh, describe in detail more, please let me know. But I, I hate to take your important time, um, if, if there's not. So we'll just move through this fairly quickly and, and, uh, but stop me if you feel a need. Um, so really the purpose of our meeting today is, is, uh, looking for public input, uh, from you all on, um, how you see things working with Y dot. Do you have a transportation system? We have a transportation system. How can we work together? Um, kind of give you an overview of what Y dot is doing and where we sit. And then again, some partnerships. So, um, first, our purpose, mission, vision and values. Uh, I think really it's important to understand the purpose that we see as Y dot, what we, we bring to the table. And really what we focus on is, uh, providing and supporting the economy here in the state of Wyoming, uh, through safely connecting communities, improving the quality of life. Wyoming is definitely, uh, unique, um, state. And it's one of the reasons we live here. Yeah, we travel a lot, whether that be for, uh, uh, school and, and kids activities or for work or, or for pleasure across the state. And, and very rarely do you go from point A to point B without running into somebody that you know. And, and so we want to be able to make sure that we're improving the quality of life, making sure that, 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 uh, transportation system is safe, it's effective, it's reliable. And, and at the same time, we're bo, bolstering the economy, um, of our local constituents. Our goals, um, we really want to make sure that we have a safe and competent workforce that we're out doing what is, uh, given to us, uh, by the taxpayers in a competent and safe manner, that we're doing things efficiently and, and, and being good stewards of that money that we're given. And then to acquire and responsibly manage our resources. So, you know, Y dot has a lot of resources out there between roads, bridges, buildings, and the other things that we've been given, uh, to, to manage. And, uh, we want to make sure that we're doing that responsibly. And then again, to provide a safe and reliable transportation system so that, you know, if you need to get from point A to point B, you can do so, uh, anytime of the day reliably and effectively. And we, we do, uh, provide essential public safety services through communication systems, whether that be through wild link, um, that we are continually building onto or allowing other, uh, local entities into the, the right away utilities and stuff that, that provides communication throughout the state. And we want to make sure that we provide and, uh, make partnerships with our other transportation stakeholders, our local, uh, governments and constituents there. And encourage the support and innovation. There's new technology. Are we doing, um, you know, are there other things that we can be doing more efficiently? And then I think again, it comes back to Wyoming with, we have a unique history and heritage. It's the reason we live here in this wonderful state. And we don't want to do something, uh, that's going to change that heritage or, or erase that history that we have. So as we try to balance all those things through the goals, we want to make sure that we, we stay grounded in the things that keep us here. And the reason why we have such great, uh, people living in the state of Wyoming. Our guiding principles and, and we've really tried to come up with these, uh, um, and, and stick to them over the last, especially six to eight months of we've been into a, a different, uh, environment financially. And, uh, so when we're making decisions on, on what we will or will not be doing in the future, how are we going to move forward with the budgets that we do? And I'm sure you, you all are wrestling with the same thing in Sweetwater County. Um, but we're gonna, we have to align our expenditures with available revenue. And we can't have, uh, a lot of services without a lot of revenue. And so we have to balance those and we're constitutionally bound to do that. Um, and so through that, first, we want to focus on identifying and addressing the critical life safety issues that are out in our state. And that, that's a hard one to break down a lot for people because you, e- everything we do has a safety aspect to it when you're out on the roadway. But what we're talking here is we know we're killing people on Wyoming roads. And we want to identify what is going on, what can we do to, to save people on those critical, those critical issues that are out there. And then we have to prior to, prioritize Y dot's assets. So, um, you know, we've got roads, bridges, buildings, all those things that are out there and, uh, we need to keep them up first. So we, we, we want to focus on preserving what we own, what we've been given to take care of at this point, um, as appropriate. So, you know, deciding, uh, do we let some of our secondary roads, uh, maybe not be quite as high standard as we used to so that we can keep some of our primary roads up better, um, and, and just trying to balance that out. And then improve operational effectiveness and efficiency. We're looking at, uh, one, you know, do, can we do things better than we have in the past as your new technology? Do we have the right tool for the right job? Um, and then we're prioritizing our activities to minimize negative impacts to the public. So as we start looking at, okay, our revenue is not going up, so our services might have to go down. What services should we reduce first that'll have the, the, the smallest impact to our constituents and the people traveling the state highways? And then at the end, um, will we addressing mobility and capacity issues? So that's adding lanes, turn lanes, passing lanes, changing intersections, things like that, that, that are taking, um, and improving, uh, maybe a lower level of service that are out on our roads and trying to get it higher. So as we move through that, these are our guiding principles as we start to make decisions, um, throughout the state. So this year, fiscal year 2020, Y dot had, uh, approximately $680 million, uh, in, in their overall budget. Uh, fifty-one and a half percent of that was federal. We had about thirty-two and a half percent highway user fees. So that is, uh, license plates. That is, uh, when you go and, um, uh, pay your highway user fees as a commercial carrier, uh, oversized loads a, and fuel taxes. And then the last sixteen percent is other state revenues. That's payment from other state agencies, other grants, things like that that come in. Um, so how this breaks out as far as control of the money, um, eighty-four percent of that $680 million is, uh, dictated by the, uh, Transportation Commission. That money goes to construction, maintenance, equipment, facilities. Uh, basically it goes back out on the road to do our everyday business that we have out there. Uh, the other sixteen percent is legislative. If you notice, that lines very much with the other, uh, monies that came in from the previous slide. Um, and it goes to patrol, aeronautics, driver's licenses, a lot of things that are enforcement or the ancillary things that we don't do every day out on our state highways. Uh, it also, uh, used to go to human resources, but, uh, as of about a month ago, uh, the governor took that away from all state agencies and consolidated human resources, uh, in hopes to, uh, to make that more streamlined. So over the last, uh, years, this slide shows in this purple, blue color, it's our revenue. Um, and the yellow is buying power. You can see they peaked about 2010. And as you go across to 2020, we have about the exact same revenue that we've had. So we've flatlined across our revenue in the last 10 years. But of course, because of cost of things, our buying power is lower. And, uh, is, is down here. So we, a, as you know, uh, uh, the dollar doesn't stretch as far as it used to. And so even though our revenue is flat, our purchasing power continues to decline. Um, one slide to show that, I just grabbed a few of our, uh, very common bid items, uh, that we use on most of our projects and, uh, show them over the years. Uh, I'll just go back to 2010. You can see unclassified excavation, which is just basically dirt. So every time we move a yard of dirt in 2010, on average, it was about $3.70. Uh, last year it was about $6.50. So almost double in price. Hot plant mix, the same thing, about $30, $30 and a half dollars in 2010. By 2019, you know, we had a 50% increase up to just over $46. So our revenue is not going up, but of course our bid prices are. Um, so a, and that's kind of the picture that we are seeing a, and have for, for some time now. So we're looking at, uh, what is our funding needs, you know, on, ongoing, uh, need studies? We're trying to determine our overall needs, uh, for the department. What is it that's absolutely needed? Not nice, but needed. Um, and trying to develop priorities around that. And then looking at the trade-off. If we do A, what does it do to B? Um, what does that impact to our constituents, you know, and to, to the, the traveling public, uh, here in Wyoming? Uh, of course, this has been an ongoing thing, but COVID-19, uh, I'm sure you're very much in the same, uh, seat. It didn't help anybody out. At one point we were seeing about a 40% reduction in traffic. Uh, luckily we've caught up a little bit. As I, I drive around the state, uh, it is busy. We see a lot of vehicles out on the road. It is busy, which is helping us, but, uh, we're still not back to even break even. So the way fuel taxes are received and dispersed, what that means for Y dot is we're going to lose about $11 million, uh, this year in 2020, which our fiscal year ends, uh, in September. And, uh, for the new fiscal year 2021, starting in October, we expect about a $23 million decrease for the next year, um, which is, is not helpful. So where does this money go? Um, a little over 56% of it goes into a highway improvement program. So that's basically everything that goes out to a contractor to build. And it, uh, does our, again, our roads, our bridges, this buildings, wild link towers, whatever we, we send a contract out there. Um, whether that be for overlaying and maintaining an existing road or adding additional, uh, facilities to, to our, our transportation program. The other, another 16.3% uh, is our maintenance and operations. So these are the things that we do in-house. Uh, basically, uh, snow plowing, pothole fixing, fence fixing, uh, that type of stuff. Anything you see those yellow trucks out doing, that's kind of our maintenance and operation budget. And then it trickles on down through, through here, through law enforcement, aeronautics, um, a, and capital expenditures. And, and you can see those as, as it goes down through. So the bulk of our program, 380 million i- is, goes to the contractors with another 110 million is what we do in-house to keep our roadways up and going. So funding, um, from 2020 that was made available to cities and counties. There was about $23.5 million total that could go to roadways that we passed on. There was about $23.5 million total that could go to roadways that we passed on through the local governments. Just under 15 million, it was optional, so we don't have to pass it through, but it made sense to do so. We were required to send 8.4 million of that to the local governments. Out of that, 20.4% or 24.4 million were federal funds and 2.9 million were state funds. And that, those go into those grant type programs such as our urban areas, our bros, our high-risk rural roads, railroad crossings, enhancement, all that kind of stuff, which we'll talk about in more detail in a minute. Thirty-two point eight million went into our airports, most of that being federal funds. As you can see, we did have $10 million of state funds. And then there is about $15 million that we pass through to our local governments for public transportation. So we have taken a look at some of our operating needs. What would it take to get us to be able to fund all of our needs that are out there? So for surface transportation, both the construction and maintenance of our assets that are there and to add some of our mobility issues, add those additional lanes. We're looking at about $69 million for construction and $3.4 million in maintenance. Revenue information system, it's a RIS. I don't know how many people are familiar with that. YDOT has been tasked with maintaining the RIS system, which is a computer system that keeps all of our personal information down in Cheyenne. So when you go in to get a driver's license and you got your passport and your birth certificate and all that kind of stuff, that that information is housed in that computer. It's also used by many other agencies. YDOT is about a 30% user of that, but other agencies also chime in and use that system. It is failing. It's very expensive to maintain because of that failure. So we're spending almost $7 million a year just in annual maintenance to replace it. It's about a $50 million upfront with a $70 million total cost over a few years. So we have not been able to find the money to replace that at this point. So we've just continually maintained it. As we jump down through here, you can see from telecoms, airports, fleet, equipment, that's vehicles, snow plows, motor graders, dozers, things that we need to continue to maintain our system. And then we jump down into our buildings. And we have buildings that are falling down to the point that they're nearly condemned, that our people are still working out of. To get those back up and maintain them appropriately, you can see what it would cost. And overall, we're just over $135 million that we need to add to our funding model to be to be equal. So what are we doing? We know we're not going to get that money anytime soon. So we're looking at all sorts of different things that we can reduce or maybe do more efficiently. I won't go through every one of these in detail, but you know, we're looking at how do we handle our fleet, our pool cars, looking at building leases. We own a lot of buildings, but we also lease a lot of buildings, especially driver services, highway patrol, that kind of stuff. Maybe that's not the best way to go, maybe it is, but we're looking into those. Again, ports of entry, we are installing or a secondary company has come to us and we are installing some new basically prepass type things at our ports for trucks to be able to get in and out of our state a little more easily and hopefully make us more efficient also. Hiring timing, we're looking at if we have a snowplow operator retire or leave the department in the spring, we are not replacing them until later in the fall and hopefully using the vacant position as a cash flow for us. So as you look through here, you can see quite a few things that we're working at, trying to decide, is it worth keeping? Are there other things that we can do more efficiently? So local government programs, things that will be affecting the local governments and our constituents at that level. I just want to go through each one of these to make sure that you're aware of what these programs do and then where we're going with them in the future. So the TAP program, which is a transportation alternatives program, it's about a $2.5 million grant a year funding source, I should say, every year. And it allows people to, or communities to have other modes of transportation. This is where you get things such as state routes, bicycle paths, that type of stuff throughout communities. And we'll continue to honor that program through, as it is, through existing agreements. And we'll continue that program under the same 80/20 split with the feds. Industrial Road Program, this is kind of the old farm-to-market program. It was there, $2 million per year, four million biennium. It was a 50% match by the county. And it was out there to try to develop economic stability and ways to get different goods across our state. It was a 50/50 match. We'll honor those that are already in the program that we have agreements with, but the IRP will be going away after that. We will no longer be funding our IRP program. Transportation Enhancement Activities, what this is, is there's $2 million sit out there every year that YDOT can add to a project. So if we were in the middle of, let's say, Rock Springs or Green River doing a project and the local entity wanted to come, wanted to add some money or some things to that project that that were similar in nature. So maybe upgrading some storm sewer, adding some street lighting, such things like that. We can add that up to $400,000 per project. It is a 90/10 split from the feds and we'll continue that as we always have with periodic reviews. You know, everything's subject to change in the future. CSA, Context Sensive Amenities, kind of the same thing. If we're working inside a municipality, we can add up to 3% above and beyond what the project scoping cost shows. And that allows for the local entity to be able to add some amenities. It helps the project blend into their culture, environment of that town. So whether it be planters, benches, such things as that. And it is a 90/10 pay. YDOT has always matched that 10% to get the 90% federal. We'll be changing that. We'll continue the program, but that match of 10% will be going to the local entity that is asking for that 3% to be added. Commissioned Road Improvement Program, CRIPE, it's a $5 million a year. This is a program that is overseen by the Transportation Commission. And it basically allows a county, most of the time, if they have a failing roadway, they can come to us. We can use this, our money to, this federal source of money with a 15% match to rebuild that roadway. The caveat is then the local entity, the county would take on the same number of miles off of the state system. So we would go out and find a low volume secondary that would function as a county road. And if we rebuilt six miles of your county road, we would then give you the six miles off of that secondary road. And it would be on the county, the county system from there on out. So you get a nice road up front, but you do end up with more maintenance for the long run off of the state system. That will continue as is, but the commission can make adjustments at any time. Surface Transportation Project, Urban Funding. So if you're a community over 5,000 in population, then you can be part of what's called the urban systems. And every year you get a certain amount depending on the population of your community. And that kind of builds up over time on a ledger. Then when you get enough to be able to do a project, a city street or something like that, you can, you can go ahead and use that money to do so. That program will continue as is, again, periodic review. The Community Snow Removal Payment, this is the one that's probably going to hit most of our smaller cities throughout Wyoming. So if you are a municipality that is below 1,500 in population, YDOT maintains the state system inside those municipal boundaries. We plot snow and that kind of stuff. If you're over 5,000 years in the urban systems, but there was kind of that no man's land between 1,500 and below 5,000. So historically, YDOT has provided funding to those cities to aid in snow removal for the winter. We did make the payments for July of 2020, but that will be the last payment to those local municipalities. And they, we will no longer be helping them out with the community snow removal payment. And I, you know, I'm not sure of which ones that will hit in the Sweetwater area. But throughout the state, that is definitely one of them that is a more impacting to our local constituents. CMAC, the Dust County Dust Suppression Mitigation, we'll continue that. That's mainly placing rhododendron tailings and or dust suppression type chemicals on our gravel roads. So that will continue into the future. Again, we'll evaluate it as we move forward depending on funding. Bridge Replacement Off Systems, BROS. It is a program where the federal government puts in 1.86 million dollars. And YDOT up to this point has matched with 1.3 million. And it allows local governments to rebuild bridges that are off of the state system. That is going to continue, but it may, you know, we'll be evaluating that in the future. If something were to change, that 1.3 million dollars that is state money could be pulled out of that and it would be reduced back to the 1.86 million of federal dollars. And then finally, High Risk Rural Roads. We know we're killing about 60% of our fatalities, or about 60% of them occur on rural roads. Usually, you know, you got tighter corners, steeper side slopes, narrower roadways. And so this high-risk rural road money is out there to help counties upgrade some of those roads, put in, you know, guardrail signs, that kind of stuff. And hoping to reduce that fatality rate out on our rural roads. So that's kind of where we're going as far as what money is being sent to local government programs. If you have questions, please let me know and we can work through those. Rest Area Closures, I'm sure you guys have heard or read about the rest area closures that we did across the state. We did pick 10 of them. Again, as we are looking at what services YDOT provides that are maybe nice but not necessary, we looked at the rest areas. And going back to our guiding principles, looking at what would have the least impact on our constituents and the traveling public. We picked 10 rest areas that are very close to other communities there. As you can see, Fort Steele is the one that's furthest away from a community that provides the same service. Most of these are within one to two miles or reside right in the same community. So again, it's a service that was being provided by the rest area, but not necessarily necessary, I should say, because that service can still be provided at the local level by the local convenience store. And our hope is that people stop, you know, grab a bag of chips and pop and, and do their business and hopefully help the economy at the same time. But by closing these 10 rest areas, we saw a net savings over a calendar year of about $900,000. So, so trying to figure out where we can cut without really making it painful to our constituents. And I would say that if you do drive over on I-25 to Chugwater, you'll see that that rest area is back open. The town of Chugwater decided it was important enough that they went ahead and took on the maintenance and costs of that rest area. And so they are now running it there in their community. So YDOT Highway Assets, it's kind of how we're balancing again, our asset needs versus the other needs that are out there. First, we're trying to maintain what we own already. And as you can see, we have about 6,800 miles of road, about 6,000 bridges and structures, 42,000 culverts, 800 miles of guardrail, 80,000 signs and 12 million, or 12,000 miles of fence. So first, our money's got to go to preserving our assets. After that, we know we have some mobility and capacity issues. We have roads that are just starting to be so crammed that they're not functioning, they're not reliable anymore. We also know we have some safety issues out there that we're trying to identify and mitigate. Wildlife is becoming bigger and bigger as we start seeing these routes. You know, as you see, the migration of the mule deer and the pronghorn that come out of Teton County and down through Sublet County and into Sweetwater County. So trying to figure out how to make safe passage for wildlife and better. Active Transportation, this goes, there's multi-facets of it, but one of them is autonomous vehicles. We know they're coming. What is that infrastructure going to look like? What have we got to do to get ahead of that? Roadside Features, we have steep drop-offs now, roadways. Do we upgrade them? Do we make, that's part of the safety issue? And then ITS is Intelligent Transportation Systems. And that's things such as the, you see out on I-80 where we have the speed limits that can be dropped depending on weather conditions and driver expectancy out there. So some of the other things we've done is we've delayed some construction projects. This is the top 10. We actually have 12 that we've identified. As you note, most of these are things that are adding capacity, reconstruction, adding something to five lanes, passing lanes, things like that. So really, that bottom guiding principle, we have adding capacity and mobility to our roadways. And there's a lot of money tied up in here. As you can see, the very first project, I-80, I-25 interchange, that's down there in Cheyenne, $310 million just for that project. So that would be our entire construction budget for one year, just in one project. We just can't afford to do that. So we are delaying these. We are continuing to do some of the preliminary engineering on them, getting the right of way and permitting and that kind of stuff. But we will not be going to construction until we have a change in funding models or find some other funding for these through grants or other things. So I'm going to switch gears a little bit. Any questions up to that point on any of these programs?
There's any questions?
Yeah, I have some questions, but I'll wait till he's finished.
Okay. So our STIP process overview, kind of what we do with our state transportation improvement planning. So this is mainly the federal money, our 10 cent tax money for fuel taxes and things that go out to our contractors. How we put this together every year, it is a six-year rolling document, but we massage it quite heavily every year right after legislation meets. So we take and we look at our asset management systems. We look at our bridges, our plant mix, from rutting to roughness, that types of stuff. And we try to get some candidate projects pulled out of there in May, April, May timeframe and get a list to balance the dollars we have with the project needs and the assets that we have. And then between June and August, we come out to the public, that's kind of what we're doing here today and saying, okay, here's what our STIP looks like. These are the projects we're doing in your area. Do you have any feedback for us that we can work into our STIP over the next six years, something that maybe we're not quite aware of or something that we can partner on with the local entities? And then by September, we turn it into our Transportation Commission who approves it, runs it through the Federal Highway Administration, and it's published in October. And then we stay with that STIP basically till the next spring when we're trying to plan. Now, as projects, maybe they get ahead of schedule and design or sometimes we end up with a bit of a catch with some right of way issues or some environmental issues that has to get pushed back. It is a living document that we massage as we move forward. So our STIP project map, if you jump on the YDOT website, you can see all these pretty little colors and flags. They have a year next to them. If you hover over one of those, it'll bring up what the project is, what we're going to do, where it's at and what year it's in. And then it gives you an opportunity to have a comment box there. That does go back to each of the districts. We review those and follow up with those comments. So if you have, if you're wondering what's going on, you can always pull this up. It is real time as best as we can keep up with it as we go through our STIPS. So once we have our STIP in there, we're kind of how we work through to get out to contract as we go through our, our planning phase, through the STIP development, catch our public input and then jump into our design phase. So we have different plan issuances, we go out and do our engineering studies, that kind of stuff. We tie in the public as appropriate. Again, most of the time if we're doing a level and overlay out in the middle of nowhere, people really don't have that much to say. But if we're downtown in front of somebody's business, we definitely want to get them involved upfront so that we know what the impacts are going to be to those individuals. And then we move on into the contract phase. We advertise, we bid it and we start construction. We continue to have those public meetings as appropriate and according to what the public interest is on those projects. Kind of an overall number of projects, you can see since about 2009, we let approximately 100 projects a year. There's a few years that are a little higher, some that are a little lower. We will make that again in 2020. We have our last letting in September and we'll be right around that $300 million, which is pretty average. So what is in the STIP? If you look at our STIP, again, it's a six-year plan. It goes over our transit projects, so our roadway, surface transportation, and then aeronautics. We look at public safety communications and then capital constructions, our buildings and other things. If you were to pull up on our website what the STIP looks like, this is what you would see for each county. This is Natrona, just as an example. But there is a block for capital improvements. It shows you what It shows you what's going on in which year, communication projects. There'd also be a block for surface transportation and anything else that's going on in there. And it just kind of gives you the breakdown of what's happening in each year. It also gives you an overview for each year of what's happening as far as transportation projects, capital improvement projects. And this would be through 2026 when it says future years and the total amount of money that's being spent in that county. You can see in Natrona County, there's going to be about 190 million over the next six years spent in that county. So with that, our local projects here. This year, what's going on is we have some projects out on I-80. I'm sure you guys are aware of those. If you've driven either east or west of Rock Springs. And we're doing some mill level and overlays between mile marker 107 and 120. And we're putting in concrete pavement there west of Green River from 77 to 83 and doing a little bridge rehab out there. Interchange Road. So I know there's been a lot of discussion about this, the new interchange there. We're still working with the railroad in trying to get that moving. Our fingers are crossed for hopefully October, we'll be able to start work on there and get going. But I'm not going to hold my breath when working with the railroad. We're kind of at their mercy with their time. So and then of course, we're always doing some our isolated annual maintenance of crack seals, chip seals, contract patch. And we are installing a wild link towers through throughout the county. Upcoming projects, there is a lot going on and coming up in Sweetwater County. So next year in 2021, we'll be doing the other half of that 107 to 120 out on I-80, mill level and overlay on the eastbound lanes. We'll be out by Bitter Creek, doing a mill overlay and some plant mix wearing course and a little bridge rehab. And then on 191 north of Rock Springs, between mile marker 21 and a half and 32.7, jump out with a mill and overlay and a chip seal out that direction. In 22, we'll be down on Wyoming 372 and the 28 junction, that Fontanel section between mile marker 17 and 27 with an overlay and a chip seal. We'll be on I-80 between 65 and 76, doing a mill overlay and wearing course. And then we'll be in the town of Green River, doing some traffic signal upgrades, some detection and some other things in there at Riverview and Monroe, and then also at Second Street. In 23, we'll be back out on I-80, both east and westbound lanes between 57 and 65, just doing overlay and some plant mix wearing course and a little bridge rehab. 24 will be again back on I-80. I feel like a broken record, I-80, I-80, I-80. It's kind of that thing that takes a lot of money and a lot of time. We'll be back out both eastbound and westbound lanes between 143 and 154, near Patrick Draw. And then we'll be back down on 191 South out there by Flamingo Road, marker 504 to 511, putting an overlay on it. 25 will be on Wild 530, doing an overlay between 38 and 45, down towards the Utah State Line. Back out again on I-80, both eastbound and westbound towards Rollins from 130 to 138. And then we'll be again down on Wyoming 530, a different section from two to seven with a mill level overlay and chip seal. This project has a little bit of an overlap with one in 26 with some ADA and a few things, as you can see. We'll be back on 530 between 26 and 33 and 26. Hopefully we're getting pretty good where that road's going to be in good shape in the next six or seven years. We'll have it kind of rebuilt or rehabbed. Then we'll be back out on I-80, Table Rock, 148 to 174, 191 South, right next to the Utah end of things. We're going to do a full depth reclamation. What that is, is when we mill up both the plant mix and the base, mix it together, recompact it, smooth it back out. And then we'll be putting an overlay and a chip seal on top of that. Hopefully to get rid of that constant cracking and break those cracks that you get that are kind of consistent out there, it breaks that up. We're working on the belt loop here in Rock Springs from zero to five, doing a crack and seat project on that concrete. And then placing also an overlay with some plant mix and some wearing course in areas. And this is the one where that Green River to Utah section on 530 mile marker zero to three overlaps with the project in 25. We will not be tearing up what we did in 25, but there is kind of an approach to the project there. And doing again, that full depth reclamation, adding some wearing course and then upgrading the ADA. So anytime we're inside a municipality where there's ADA facilities already present, if we go in there and we do anything more than basically a chip seal and some minor things, we have to do by federal regulation, the ADA upgrades. So we'll take care of those while we're there. And then we'll be out on that service road by Little America, also on 374 from mile marker 70 to 84 with that another full depth reclamation and an overlay. So that's kind of what we have in projects planned up to this point for Sweetwater over the next six years. So I'm just going to jump into some of the partnerships that we have or we can have. I'm not going to go through these in detail. We already kind of talked about them, but again, you have the bros, the contact sensitive amenities, our enhancements, the tap, the CMAC, the Crip, high risk rural roads, the flap. This is one I didn't talk about. So just quickly, it is a federal lands access program. You're probably familiar with it, but if you have federal land in some location that is, a lot of people go out and recreate, or maybe there's a mine or something like that out there. The road needs rebuilt, that takes you to that federal land, you can put in for a grant. And it's a 10% local match to help rebuild that road to maintain that access to that federal property. Again, public transportation and then not that it's run by us, but this is a big opportunity for local governments. I'm sure everybody's aware of it, but the SLIB Capital Construction Loan Program. So which is important. It helps a lot of our communities stay afloat. Other partnerships that we have during construction, we do a lot of things out on our roadways. Everything from fencing to overlaying to chip sealing to whatever. If there's something that we are doing and we're in the area where the county is wanting something done, we can do a partnership agreement. So say we're out doing a chip seal and you guys have a county road that is near where we're already working. We can do an agreement to add your county road to our project. And what that does is gets you the unit price that YDOT pays. So hopefully economy of scale and it keeps the cost a little bit lower. And we just do an agreement to, for the preliminary engineering and the construction costs. We oversee all of that and the county just reimburses us for their actual costs for their portion of the project. So if there's anything we're doing out there and you think, hey, there should be an opportunity for us to jump on board, we can definitely do that. The other is through supply purchases. We buy a lot of stuff, everything from road oil to bulk salts to paint beads, even drug and alcohol testing services. Our contracts are written to allow a local entity to piggyback on for the same price. So you don't have to be part of the contract upfront, but you can get into the contract after the award to whatever area. So if we're, say, we're buying a bunch of road oil to do chip seals and you guys need some, you can jump onto our, onto our contract at that point and get the same price that YDOT does. So there's some opportunities there. So just quick contact information again, I'm Randy Merritt, the interim district engineer. I don't know how much longer I'll be down in the District Three area. It kind of depends on the health of our individual there and what happens. But at least through the end of this month, I'll be around. Our chief engineer in Cheyenne is Mark Gillette. Keith Fulton is our assistant chief engineer over engineering and planning. Our assistant chief over operations was vacant until this week. And that now is an individual named Tom Dehoff. He's out of the Laramie area and he'll be there in Cheyenne, taking over those, that end of things. And probably the most important number, if you don't have it or don't know Sarah, you need to get to know her. So write this number down. She is our local government coordinator. She's the one that takes care of all these programs that are out there and knows them inside and out. So I know enough just to be dangerous, but if you really want the full story, Sarah is the one to talk to and work through all of the ins and outs of how these programs work. So last question that we have, and again, I don't expect an answer today, but to think about it, how do we work together? You, again, you guys are balancing your dollars on your transportation system. We're trying to balance our dollars on our transportation system. Are there ways that we can work together and make those dollars stretch further? And then also are there ways to enhance that funding here? There's things that we can do to go out and try to find funding together and make it to where each of us has a little more to do what we need with. With that, this year also, this presentation or very similar presentation is online. It started on July 13th, it ends on August 31st. If you go to YDOTSTIPmeeting.com, you can walk through the same slides basically. And there's opportunities for feedback and comments in there. So if there's something that you think, boy, I really got to ask this, you can pop on there, go back through, ask your question there or you can give me a call either way. So with that, I know we're really close on time. That is the last of our PowerPoint presentation. So I'll open up questions, whatever question you have.
Yeah, Randy, this is Wally Johnson. First of all, I'd like to thank you for the great presentation you just made. That's very informative. We appreciate that very much. But the other thank you I would give you is for the rotor mill that you provide for us. That's very, very important to us. We utilize that and it's very important to the transportation system within Sweetwater County. And we all appreciate that. The other project that you're involved in is a joint project on fence modification on Highway 28 with Wyoming game and fish. You know, that's not only in the interest of wildlife, but that's a safety issue with that fence modification. And I'd urge you to continue that if at all possible. But the real answer to that problem with Highway 28, if we really believe that our big game animals are an asset for the state of Wyoming, there needs to be an overpass on Highway 28. I keep preaching that. And obviously it's a poor time to be asking for money to do a major project like that. But the suggestion I've made in the past and I'll continue to make it is in good times, oil and gas in Sweetwater County and the state of Wyoming takes tremendous profits out of the state of Wyoming. And I think some of that could be put back if they would be willing to, for a public private project such as that overpass and allow them to advertise on each side of that headed east or headed west. This overpass built with funds from BP, for example, or Exxon, et cetera. And partner up with those people to get that overpass built. Because once those pronghorns and deer and elk get into the red desert, they're safe. And so is the public that are traveling on Highway 28. So I'd urge you to keep an open mind on different ways to fund the possible overpass for 28 and see if it can't be done. Where there's a will, there's a way. And I think in the interest of public safety and the wildlife that we all respect and need for the economy of Sweetwater County and state of Wyoming, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson. I can only, you know, echo what Commissioner Johnson's saying, Randy, but also when I think about those overpasses and life saving, whether it's animal or people, it fits directly in line, I think, with your guiding principles, number two, which is focusing on the addressing identified critical life safety issues. Because that is critical and it is life saving and meets all the other objectives that Commissioner Johnson talked about. So other commissioners, comments or questions? And Gene, I know you're on, so if you've got a question, feel free to ask Randy and we'll see what we can do. No other questions? All right, with that, Randy, we thank you very much and we're appreciative of what you do with the Transportation Department for the state of Wyoming, especially District Three. Very enlightening to know that with phone call to the right person, there can be assistance. And we know Mr. Legursky, our public works director, works very close with District Three and probably has a handle on all these programs. And we appreciate you making them available to us so that we can operate more efficiently in the county. But to you and rest of your employees, be safe out there and let them know. We appreciate the work they're doing for the citizens of Sweetwater County. Thank you, Randy, and be safe.
Thank you. Appreciate the opportunity to be here and share this with you today.
Gene, you had something?
No, I did not. I just want to thank Randy and his staff for all that they do for Sweetwater County and their help and guidance and something. We share specs and rotor mill is important. We just bought two plow trucks. If they get a master service agreement to buy from Floyd's here in town that you guys approved and we got those on order. So things are working well between us.
Great. Good to hear that. Thank you, Randy, for all that. Thank you, Gene. Okay, if there's no more questions, we'll continue on with our business for today and we'll move right into tab G. And let's see where we're at here. Let's go ahead and move into tab G and probably H. And maybe we'll take a break then or something. But anyhow, was that okay, commissioners, or do you need a break now?
It's fine with me.
A break?
Yeah, either way.
Let's move on. Let's get a couple more done here and see if we can go. Let's move into tab G, which discussion on the COVID updates for the commissioners meeting room. And with us is Mr. Legursky. So Gene, are you out there?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A couple of things on this, I'm going to secure my screen here shortly. But as you guys know, we qualified for some COVID relief money to make the commissioner meeting room better so we can start meeting the public. But in that grand scheme of things, we also need to keep in mind with technology upgrades, this has worked really well for people that are not able to attend those meetings. They can watch them, they can participate through Zoom, they can participate through other things. So we need to keep in mind that whole thing when we upgrade this room to incorporate back technology, because that only helps with COVID, but it helps with just being better, having you guys better connected to the constituents that you guys represent. And what I'll do is Tim's on there and he can answer some of the things. But I'd like you to lead you through the three different scenarios that I came up with. All of them have pluses or minuses. We can talk about that, discuss them and go through those. So I'll share my screen and I want to start out. I didn't really call them fancy. I'm not very good at words. So I just, I call it, we'll start with the corner meeting room concept idea and go from there. Can you guys see that?
Sure can, Gene.
Okay, so what I'll do is I'll zoom in on this one right here. And what this is, is it's the corner meeting room idea. This is the vestibule and the main hallway that comes in. This is the existing doorway. This is the doorway that goes in the commission meeting room. You guys typically sit up here. This corner meeting room concept, in order to get you guys spaced far enough apart, we cannot put everybody spaced along this back wall. There is not enough room. It's 23 foot. And in order to get you guys spaced, we actually need 24 feet between you guys and plus maneuverability room unless you guys are going to do a Dukes of Hazzard insider over the commissioner's table every time you got to get in and out of there. This one's putting you guys against that back wall. It's not going to work. We came up with this corner meeting idea. We could sit two commissioners here and three here, generate during COVID situations, eight public seating areas. We could have the attorney and the clerk and the IT sitting back here. With this, you know, the clerk could be in there, Sally could be in there, however they need to do that. I don't know, but one could be in their office because they could be doing exactly what they are now. This is a pretty simple one. If you've actually looked in the meeting room right now, the carpet's gone. The ceiling has been gone. We've looked at everything above it. We're actually looking at raising that ceiling a little bit, probably about a foot to get some better viewing angles, to be able to hang a TV from the rafters, not have anybody hit it, stuff like that. So you guys can see that and there'll be different presentation TVs around the room that we can use. Tim has talked about utilizing two of the TVs that he has access to here and then purchasing some other ones. We would have an upgraded camera on this far wall where the existing camera is and another camera behind you guys that would actually get the people speaking from the podium or out in the audience there. Mics and sound and everything like that would be wired throughout the room and that's part of those. If you look at the next one, it's a rotated meeting room, kind of the same concept, except we can fit you guys along this wall. This would be the west wall. And we have the clerk and the attorney sit up front, same kind of concept with the TVs hanging on the sides and in the middle. The one thing about this- The one thing about this and the other one that I didn't mention is for audio visual stuff to do it on Zoom. This orientation with you guys against these windows, unless we black those windows out, is not very good because of AV. The cameras pick up light differences and everything. And, and if you guys have noticed on Zoom, depending on how your individual offices or wherever you are. Are lighted, it's very tough to see you guys. So during the different times of the year, these windows and these windows become a problem. When we looked at that, you know, after these two, we could fit, you know, roughly eight people in here. And I turned around, I said, well, what happens if we do something completely different? And that lead, led us into the third one. The third one is a little bit more detailed. And the reason I say that is because if you look at this one, there's Jeff Smith's office here. You have a, a small bathroom here and a janitorial closet here. Now, when we went to the other one, we actually started looking at what this wall was made out of. If there was a beam or anything in there, it isn't. The beams actually run over here. So between this one and this one, what I looked at doing is if we expand that, take Jeff's office, the bathroom. The janitorial closet out and expanded you guys and put you guys over here. We could space everybody apart. There's no windows in the back, so audio visually it's good. We'd keep the two commissioners here. What we would do is move the, the third commissioner that was here over in Bonnie's office. And then move Bonnie into Mark's office. And then what we do is Mark's part of land use, so we thought about moving him downstairs with us. You know, Bonnie could stay in this office and we would put the other one over there. But for right now, I just figured that you guys would kind of like to be hidden behind this corner and then they would, everybody would walk directly to your office. That's, you know, that's just moving somebody. That isn't really critical. But what this one provides for everybody is a, is a thoroughly square room. It's thirty-five by twenty-nine. You can also fit fourteen public seats. You can almost double the amount of public that you can have in there. Very good for planning and zoning. Very good for you guys. The other thing it allows us to do is to be able to completely utilize technology to be able to put two TVs up, two TVs for the audience. This section right here would be a raised podium. So you guys are up off the ground, only six inches. And the reason we do that is because of ADA and other safety things where we would need. Almost said guardrail, not guardrail, handrail and stuff like that. And then we'd have to put an ADA handicap ramp back into Sally's office. And move her stuff in a different way. We would need to move Jeff's door. Jeff's door is kind of in the middle of his office. Well, after, sorry, Lauren's office right here, and we'd need to move that down. And then also, because this room would be able to, under non-COVID times, have so many people sitting in it. The occupancy is almost a hundred and thirty people in there now. We'd need to actually have another exit door that we'd put in. And this goes out into the veranda. This is Commissioner Lloyd's office with the double doors that come out. And so this veranda with the things, we had already talked to the fire marshal just to kind of see if this was even possible. He suggested this. It's good flow. That way you can have half the people escaping this way and half the people escaping that way. Kind of what I'd like to do is just if you guys have questions, we can go over these three. I want to get some direction with you guys. Cause my goal is to have these implemented and in place by Thanksgiving. We have a deadline with everything by the end of December. But with any of these, excuse me, we have, you know, lighting, we have a special scum contractors. We have a lot of things that we have to get in place and kind of in a queue so we can get this done in a timely fashion.
Thank you, Gene. Anything else to add to that? Okay, thank you. The one thing, you know, you talked about your deadline of December thirty first, I believe. I believe that's when the money has to be spent coming out of this COVID nineteen grant.
That is correct.
Yeah, so it's.
And by the time, you know, they finally bill us, we get it turned around and stuff like that. I want to be done by Thanksgiving so we make sure that we do not break that deadline.
And that's the importance of that deadline. So, that type thing. Okay, I'll open the floor up. Commissioners, your thoughts?
I have a question for Gene. Hey Gene, looking at these drawings, I guess, you know, from a schematic technological point. Which one would, which one do you, which one did you prefer? Which one would you recommend to be the best? As I look through, I kind of lean toward open meeting room, just because it had more seating. And it seemed to be that you kind of leaned that way, but which one would be your, your recommendation?
My recommendation would be the open meeting room also, not only for the public seating, but also technology. It works very well as far as audio visually with the cameras, the seating and everything like that. You start getting in the corner meeting room at awkward spaces. Anytime you can get a room close to a square as possible. It's just better for seating, audio visual and everything around it.
Thanks, Gene. Thank you, Commissioner Lloyd. Other commissioners, thoughts?
Yeah, this, as I've looked at these and given this some thought. You know, again, we're doing this in the interest of a, a virus that hopefully is going to be gone. In possibly as early as next year with vaccines, with the vaccines, it might be possible. And we're changing the design of, of our meeting room primarily based on that. There's another issue that we need to keep in mind is, as you heard one of the comments that was made today. That do we really need, and I'm talking about the future and I, I'm not saying this today. I was opposed when we went to five commissioners, when we did go to five commissioners, but sometime in the future, there might be a desire for. For the county to go back to three commissioners. And here we're designing this for five. There are a lot of issues here that I think. Need to be in the equation before we make that decision. So I, I just think, and obviously I'm not going to be here and, and some of you aren't going to be here sometime in the future. And this is a, this is a modification that's going to be with us a long time. And I think we need to give it due consideration before we make that decision. But obviously time is of the essence in order to take advantage of the monies that have been made available to us. So alls I'm saying to my co-commissioners, keep that in mind when you, when you make your decision as to how we should go.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson. Other commissioners?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Shanefield?
Um, I just wanted to ensure with Mr. Legursky that all three of these would fit under the. Grant that we received funding wise.
Mr. Shanefield, or, or sorry, Miss, Miss Shanefield. Not all the, not a hundred percent. The open meeting room, the wall in the back would probably not be covered by that. But that is a very minimal cost for the space.
Thank you.
Everything else has been planned.
Commissioners, other comments? Commissioner Smith?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Just to weigh in, I guess. Mr. Legursky was kind enough to come by my office that he wants to demolish and, and visit with me about it. And I have no problems with that. I think, I think it's great. It's a, I, I think that for the long term. Whether it be three or five commissioners looking at open meeting room, it's always been an issue for us, just the layout. And it's awkward for people sitting and, you know, don't really have a place to stand. And it's, it's been, it's been a little perky jerky. So just looking at it overall, I think that's a, a great, a great concept. Just make sure that two of those commission chairs are removable, you know, in case we, in case we go back down to, go back down to three.
About this is, we will not be putting in stadium seating. Stadium seating is going to be a thing of the past, so all of these will be removable. Your guys will be of a little different quality and probably have wheels on them, but they can still be rolled out if needed. But all the rest of them, we can add, subtract. The room can be better utilized for bigger meetings. Once, once COVID's over, we could put a lot of people in this room. Whether we want to or not, that's up to you guys, but we're not going to go back to the stadium seating. That's an outdated model.
Thank you. Other comments, commissioners?
Just ask Gene to clarify, are you saying that the seating and that's going to be on wheels and it's not going to be fastened?
No, your guys is, your guys would be on wheels. You guys would have movable chairs. The other ones would be movable chairs. They would not be bolted to the floor, but they'll be more like waiting room chairs or the ones that you see in offices. That have four legs that could be moved around for spacing. That way, when COVID comes back and we don't have to unbolt everything from the floor and redo the carpet. We can just add more chairs in there.
Thank you.
One thought on the five chairs up front. If we're going to continue to use that for planning and zoning, even if we were to eventually go down to three. That would still convene to planning and zoning with the five up there, right, Gene?
Correct.
So it provides some actual better multi-use options for a, a meeting space in this, in our area too.
It, it does. And one of the things that I kind of, I actually picked EDA's brain a little bit about this when we were talking about some other stuff. If, if you look at a, a good multi-use room, you look over at the justice center at the sheriff's training room. That can be used for a myriad of things. Whether you guys want to do that or not, it's your guys' room. It's up to you guys. But with the technology in there, with the way that we're going to concrete floor and do the AV, it can be used for different things as, as your guys are choosing.
Thank you, Gene. Other comments, commissioners? My final comment would be is, is you know, we're, we're always talking about making things better for the public. I mean, we're here to serve the public and, and the setups that we have. We always felt that we needed to improve on our, our present room. And of course, we're presently moving forward in that direction to do something with it, which is a plus. But we have an opportunity to make it even more multifaceted by the open meeting room. But I also hear loud and clear what Commissioner Johnson says, what may happen down the roadways. We heard a public comment this morning about going back to three commissioners. I believe that'll continue to come up. I believe. Those that are three have conversations that go into five and those that are five have conversation go back three, so it'll never go away. It's just a matter of the times and what's going on. But same token, we have an opportunity to improve our meeting room and make it better for the public. Even presently, we don't have decent presentation areas for our presenters. And sometimes it's, it's a little uncomfortable. I'll just say that from sitting at the front of the table. I've always looked for the opportunity to see that get done. Of course, same token, I look for the opportunity to get it done. And as, as cheap and as free as possible, and we have an opportunity with that, even though it may require some adjustment later on. We do know and we do believe that some point in time COVID nineteen will be managed. And we could be back to where social distancing may or may not go away. But again, too, we, the other belief out there is after COVID nineteen, what's next? Could it be another situation requiring social distancing and therefore until. The commission has an opportunity to really look at what the courthouse improvements may be down the road based on any planning. This does provide an opportunity for us to not only fix the room up, but also to expand it. And to make it better for the public. So I don't know, Gene, what are we looking for, for today?
Mr. Chairman, I, I'm looking for a direction on which way you would like me to go to remodel this room. It's your guys' room. It's the public's room. You know, I voiced my opinion on which one I feel is best. However, I will do whatever direction you guys leave me.
Thank you, Gene. You know, having, I gotta just say this when you say it's the public's room and that type thing. I think back to some of the school district meetings when the boardroom filled up with people. And I'm going, well, do we really, really want to do that? But we owe, we owe the public that opportunity to come in as, as many as possible. And whatever groups they are. So I, I just really think we need a larger area. But, you know, I, I don't know who's going to go tell whomever it is, Mark or Bonnie, that they may move. You know, because we're looking at one of those offices or both of them, you know, and that type of thing. So I, I would.
He doesn't have to come and talk to me and tell me I was going to move, so. It's right up his, right up his alley.
You already volunteered. You addressed yourself all by yourself. So I'm not worried about you.
Mr. Smith, I'll, Commissioner Smith, I'll lay it back on your shoulders and whoever you want to move, whatever office you think is best, I will go in and tell them.
Okay, fair enough.
I was going to make part of my motion that the chairman had a side and share with the, with the people moving.
Right.
The one thing that I did not point out, commissioners, is on the back of the open meeting room, off of that is a door for you guys to go back into. Main office where you guys have, so you're not walking through the public, you're not doing that kind of stuff. The flow with that works a lot better.
Thank you. And in answer to the chairman doing this or that, I've been around the county enough that I know where there's empty offices and purchasing. Sheriff's office and other buildings other than this one. So if you leave it up to me, you might be blessed with my answer.
Count me in, count me in.
We, we have three over at Road and Bridge in Rock Springs.
There you go. I'm telling you what. Yeah, there's even some over in the maintenance shop. But anyway, enough of that. I, I just really see an opportunity. I, and I am cautious because of what Commissioner Johnson said, but I, I also see an opportunity of making this better for the public. And, and it'd be a good decision for the public. And I'd like to see us move forward, Gene, with just me. I'm only one. So I'd like to see it move forward with the open meeting room. Other commissioners, your thoughts? Consensus agreement or what?
I'd agree.
Motion on it.
You know what? If you want to put it marble, go for it.
Yeah, I'd like to make, move, make a motion to move forward using the grant funding. On it, have Gene move forward on the open meeting room concept.
And you're specifying COVID nineteen grant funding?
COVID nineteen, CARES Act money that Christina received by.
Yeah, CARES Act. Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. Any further discussion for the open meeting room? Design. No further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote, post same sign, motion carries. Does that work for you, Gene?
I guess that does. And if there's anything, you know, because I wanted to come to you guys first outside of talking to Commissioner Smith. If there's anything that comes up in the process, we looked at most of the duck work, everything like that. But if something comes up where this can't be done with more, now that we, we, we don't want to, we didn't want to disturb people and have them in a stir and tell you guys, okay, this. If there's something that comes up, I'll bring it to you the next meeting. But as far as we know right now, looking at the duck work, looking at all the plans that we can completely do this ourselves.
All right. Thank you, Gene. All right, with that, we'll keep moving on. The next one will be. I believe tab H, approval of the coronavirus relief grant. Agreement for Sweetwater County COVID nineteen courthouse project. And with us is Christina Marshall and Mr. Legursky. And after this item, we'll take a break. Christina, Gene, welcome. Floor is yours, Christina.
Great. Well, good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. And the last agenda item was a perfect segue into the actual coronavirus relief grant agreement. For Sweetwater County. So Gene was talking previously about one part of this grant award. But Sweetwater County was actually awarded two hundred and forty thousand eighty-five dollars from the Office of State Lands and Investments. As you all discussed, the term of this funding ends on September or December thirtieth, twenty twenty. There is no required match. However, I would like to point out that regarding the commissioners meeting room. The proposal stated that the project would be complete. It would take about a month to complete. So part of proving that this is necessary expenditures is, is doing it timely, not waiting to the end. So I'm very happy to see you moving forward. Besides the adaptive reuse of the commissioners meeting room, there's two other parts of this award. So first of all, just to be clear, the meeting rooms budget is a hundred and seventy-two thousand eight, seven hundred and eighty-six dollars. This was considered a necessary project so that, that you all could host a live meeting. Both by Zoom and have citizens be able to attend that meeting. The second part of this grant award is for the courthouse public health modifications and PPE. As you know, ran the courthouse, we have Plexiglas, Dropbox, we have Zoom licenses, et cetera. We will be awarded twelve thousand sixty-nine dollars for those costs that have actually been incurred. And then finally, we have those door attendants and we budgeted for payroll through December of twenty twenty. For a total budget of fifty-five thousand two hundred and thirty dollars. So exceptionally, expenses that were incurred on or after March first. Associated with this project proposal will be reimbursed. And of course, technology is an important part of this project. And so that's why Tim is here to answer any questions about the technology. Gene also talked about the. Gene also, uh, talked about the room, but the door attendants are actually under him as well. So with that, I would be happy to answer any questions, um, or entertain a motion, or you can ask Tim and Gene.
All right, thank you, Christina. Commissioners, any questions for Christina, Gene and/or Tim? Commissioners?
Free money is good money, so, yeah, I said that.
I agree with you. Run it, grab it, run. Um, all right, so if there's no more questions, uh, commissioners, uh, I would, uh, entertain a motion to approve and authorize the chairman to sign the coronavirus relief grant agreement for the Sweetwater County COVID nineteen courthouse project. I got a motion by Commissioner Shane Field, is there a second, Mr. Commissioner Lloyd?
I guess, I'll second.
You, 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 just by a smidge, just by a smidge, any further discussion, commissioners? Any further discussion without a further discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Vote, post same sign, motion carries, good job, way to go. This is important. Thank you, commissioners. Thank you, Gene, thank you, Christina, and thanks, Tim. With that, we're going to stop and take a ten-minute break.
Oh, good.
Then we'll come back to Tab I, which is facilities update with Mr. Legursky and Mr. McLean. Thank you.
Are we ready?
As soon as, I'm waiting for Jeff and for Lauren. I guess we could move forward as a three-member commission, oh no, there's four.
Wait on me. Go get them.
Oh, funny you guys are, you're killing me. Okay, we're ready. I'd like to call this, uh, Board of County Commissioners meeting for, uh, August eighteenth, back to order and moving on with our agenda. Next up is under Tab I. Facilities update, Mr. Legursky, Mr. McLean, gentlemen, the floor is yours.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, County Commissioners, I'll, I'll go first just to get us up to speed on this issue. Um, a number of years ago, um, after, um, a number of, um, early retirements, um, we had vacancies in offices. Um, and then with the conclusion of the construction of the Justice Center, um, the county had a number of facilities, um, that were vacant. Um, in addition, during the discussion, uh, of the possible construction of the Roden Bridge, uh, facility, um, there, the intent of that project was to from further consolidate essentially three or four buildings into one, uh, building, uh, thereby creating potentially some other vacancies. So, um, at that time, um, as you know, the Facilities Committee put together a report on each of those facilities, including critical data on the age, size, um, potential use, um, pros and cons of the building, um, and some critical data on the building and presented that, uh, to the board, um, some months ago. Um, since that time, uh, the, um, obviously there's been some, uh, change in the direction with respect to the combined room bridge facility. And we have completed vacating all of the offices out of the seven thirty-one C Street building, which is the old hospital. And so, um, basically, uh, that gets us kind of where we are, uh, today. And, um, the, uh, and now that I think Gene's up to speed with all the facilities and um, has information in the D U solution system. I think he can talk a little bit more specifically where we're at today, um, with respect to those facilities and the communication that he's had.
Thank you, Gary. Okay, Gene?
Um, with that, just, uh, the kind of highlight on the D U solutions like, uh, Commissioner Johnson talked about, um, we're under a two-week trial period, all the data's in there. Um, and we're constantly adding or I'm constantly adding more data to it, um, as we see fit. So we have a, a centralized database for all of this. Um, I have a meeting, um, tomorrow, I believe, with, uh, some component units because you guys okayed, uh, a facility condition assessment for some buildings out of the events complex. Um, the libraries, Roosevelt School, um, a couple of the parks and also Southwest Counseling. And so we're going to do a kickoff meeting. I've invited the people that are interested in those various agencies to be able to join this. Uh, some of them have said, yeah, they'll be on there, no problem. Some of them opted to just let me handle it, which is fine either way. Um, and then we're going to schedule a date for dude to come up here and to do the exact same thing that they did to our primary buildings again, and then they'll turn over a report sometime hopefully in November. So we'll have a really good idea in November, December to be able to digest that and start on with our capital planning process. For, I would say about eighty-five percent of the critical buildings in the county. We'll do another one next year, um, to kind of wrap that up. But we'll get a very good handle on, um, all of our large, very large sized buildings. Um, with that, as Gary alluded, we have several buildings out there, um, that have been vacated, um, through work of staff and, and other people getting out of there. The C Street building was the last one, uh, juvenile probation, um, as finally, we still have to move some stuff of hers out of there, but she's got it all boxed up and went through stuff and downsized considerably. So I want to thank her for that. Um, but of, an interesting note, um, I know some of you guys were on a stakeholders call during the COVID thing when this came up, but these, uh, West Awamah Community College is actually going through a study right now to look at their nursing program. And their nursing program, uh, is under the direction of, of trying to find some alternatives that'll be done in January. Um, Gary floated out the idea to them that, A, the C Street building used to be an old hospital. Uh, matter of fact, my mom actually graduated from the nursing program there back in the fifties. And I know a lot of people were born there, I know a ton of nurses that went up there, so it's got a lot of historical value that ties in really nice. So I approached Dr. Dale and, uh, Burt Reynolds with, uh, facility maintenance up there to maybe come and look at it, just to see if they were interested in it. We have that scheduled for this coming Thursday to look at that, that will go into their process. Um, and like, they're looking at, uh, putting a new building up, they're looking at renovating some stuff, they're looking at what else is out there. Um, so this is just a way to be able to do that. Um, you know, of course, we won't make any commitments, that's all your guys' decision, but it'll help them finalize their plans and actually look at all the buildings that are possible out there. I think it has an awesome tie-in with the history, um, it's an awesome use of the building and it's plenty of space for them to go forward and be able to grow into. Um, with that, I also have another meeting with Clayton Wyoming. With COVID going on, everybody is looking for spaces. Um, to be able to hold classes in, to be able to socially distance, something like that. Clayton Wyoming, uh, just wants to explore different buildings and see if we have any space. Climb Wyoming just wants to explore different buildings and see if we have any space that they may be able to use or rent from us for three or four months. We don't know how that'll go, but they don't know the rooms that we have, and they look at other options of trying to rent rooms and end up coming to some roadblocks for that. So I'll be meeting with them. Roosevelt School is kind of an interesting one, where Gold Now Senior Citizen Center is. We were approached last summer. Somebody wanted to come and look at it, possibly put a trial day here. We met with them, kind of showed them the thing, and I don't know exactly what happened to that. But with school district number two, looking at possibly putting that into a school building just for the district employees, and some other things are happening around in the community, that discussion has come up again. And we're actually going to meet with the City of Green River, the school board, and some other interested parties to see if, if maybe the county is willing to help them out up there. It would be a good use of the space. It would be possibly a good revenue generator for Gold Now, or however that happens. More importantly, it's a good value-added thing to the community. When we talk about things that are value-added, one of the things that Eric has stumbled into and the City of Green River is, hey, if we move in people, what is the available childcare? What is it? What can we do? Where's it at? And that has always been a roadblock for them. And maybe if we all get together and cooperate and come up with a solution that can work community-wide, we'll be better for that. So that's actually one of the other things. Another interesting one came up, and it kind of segues into the step plan that White I talked about, is they have federal funding out there for transportation alternatives. And one of the things of transportation alternatives is the Starbusing Program. At Starbus, I don't know, and many of you guys know this, but Starbus was originally located in the Roden Bridge building in Rock Springs in the upstairs. That was where their offices were. About a year ago, they were looking for different areas. They came down and looked at the building again. But that is one of those places in this grand scheme of things. And you know, when Lagoon Road goes, if that is a good possibility for them to be able to use some federal funding to upgrade that building and possibly purchase it for them. And what I would like to do is as more, either the liaison do that, or myself, you know, Commissioner Lloyd, to kind of open those discussions with them and see where it goes and see if they're still interested. Don't know. You know, everything has changed in the last four to six months. We don't know where everybody's at, but it's still a viable use for them. They can fit all their buses in there. They can centralize everything. I know they have just, that was about four or five months ago, they signed a new lease for their administrative people for a multi-year contract, so that wouldn't be, but you know, this is going to take multi-years to be able to do that. But it's a good use. It's a nice interview for them. And there's also, like I said, some federal money out there. So I just want to kind of bring you guys up to speed on stuff that the Building Committee has been working on. You know, nothing is final. We don't make any promises. It's all your guys' decision. But there's good discussion out there, and there's good talks out there with these buildings being available and, and us knowing exactly what's in them through the facilities committees work that they did all last year, they're valuable assets that we can, you know, help other people possibly, other public agencies possibly move into. So with that, I'll answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Thank you, Mr. McLean. Any questions for Mr. Legursky or Mr. McLean?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, not a, not a question, just a comment. The C Street facility is, that's an excellent, excellent idea there for the colleagues to put the training back up in, into that facility. And I think as you show that to them, or whatever you do, I really suggest that you emphasize that, that we're, and I would assume that my co-commissioners are on this, they understand that the historical importance of that facility to not only Sweetwater County, but City of Rock Springs. It's ideal location. It's got a campus that would fit in perfectly with the, the teaching concept. And whoever come up with that idea, I really think you did a great job on that. And your other thoughts, I think, are valid. Again, it's an example, I think, of the commission giving direct, general direction to staff, and they've done an excellent job with that. I applaud the facilities group for doing that, especially Gary and, and Gene.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson. Other commissioners? Gary?
Yeah, just the only thing I, I would add to that is just, I think, as of yesterday, maybe Friday, with respect to the Roosevelt School as a potential daycare site, the school district only had eight people that had signed up for daycare potentially in, in their setting. So they, they're not moving ahead with that. CDC has canceled the, the childcare, daycare at the CDC in Green River. And so and then in addition to that, the city's had a request, a couple requests recently for small daycare in their, in home daycare, five to ten people size. And, and so they're interested in this solution also. Finally, in, in the stakeholder meetings that we've had, I know Doc's been in a number of those, Lauren's been in a few, and I think Jeff, or Roy's been in a few, and Jeff has also. Industry and hospital, Aspen, and some other larger entities within the community have expressed concern both for their employees and just general for the attractiveness of the community relative to daycare. And so you know, obviously, that's not a realm that we move in. We've tried to invite everybody to the meeting that had expressed interest and opened up the invitation if there were others that people thought needed to come. So we can try to explore whether that facility makes sense. Also, that facility is adjacent to the city park. It was part of a, of a facility transfer with the City of Green River way back when. That facility recently obtained fiber optic in the facility, so there's fiber optic connectivity in there, which has, you know, some potential benefit in terms of meeting any online education needs or, or what have you. So that's basically where we're at with that, just trying to see if there's something we can do with that building. It's that vacant. The only other thing I'd add is that many of those rooms were, were still stored some of the election equipment. We've got a plan. I think Gene has a tentative plan of storing that in the facility. So Cindy's folks can access the equipment and test it regularly and store supplies in those areas. And so obviously, we didn't want to try to do that in the middle of the ongoing election. The old election is, and equipment has been collected by the state, and they have taken that away. So the time seems right as we have vacated or will soon vacate some of that space to look at some, some other options.
Thank you, Gary. Questions, comments, commissioners for either Gene or Gary? Well, I think it's wonderful news. I'm excited about the inventory for the capital buildings, Gene, with Dude Solutions and that type of thing, plus the component units that you're going to move out into and take a look at. And it's really going to help, I think, for that future planning for capital improvements. And I, I agree with everything I was hearing changed in the last three to four months with Gary saying, and that the needs have changed in both communities to where they need to look at some things to help as people come into it. And Gary brought up a good point about the minds and people coming into our communities. As we do know that the real estate is moving quickly, but the majority of those buyers for homes are out-of-staters. And on the commissioner's call again yesterday, that was a conversation. Gillette's getting an influx as well as we are in Sweetwater County. If people seeing Wyoming as a place to move during these pandemic times, and they're selling everything and coming here without jobs. So it goes right into play with Gary says, what are we going to have in these communities for, for childcare and that type of thing? So good report, gentlemen. If there's not any more questions or comments, we'll move on. Did you need any direction, Gene, or?
No, I just had more of just kind of filling everybody in and where we're going. And, you know, there's a lot of stuff that goes behind the scenes, and a lot of dedicated people that are pushing this forward. So I wanted to make sure that you guys were abreast of everything.
Appreciate what you guys are doing, along with everything else you're doing. Thank you very much. All right. With that, we'll continue to move on with our agenda. The next up will be a, again, it'll be a request approval to extend employment of seasonal truck drivers, and that'll be Mr. McGlar, Mr. Legursky and Mr. McLean again. So the floor is yours, Gary. Gene?
Mr. Chairman, during the, the budget process this year, Gene, Public Works Department in Roden Bridge had budgeted two seasonal positions, truck driver positions, to a total of just a little over twenty-five thousand dollars. In the process of recruiting for those positions, we were approached by the folks from Climb Wyoming to see, they had some folks that were, had recently graduated, in fact, I think just graduated. And they were looking to place those folks in occupations consistent with their training. And so we were able to do that. We placed them driving for Roden Bridge. For those of you that aren't familiar with the program, in order to sort of provide that experience, they reimbursed us for the period for which they worked, that reimbursement was about ten thousand five hundred dollars. And, and so the, essentially, from a budget standpoint, we're neutral in, in those areas. And I think what Gene's requesting is to extend that seasonal use. The program has worked very well by nearly all accounts. It's provided some diversity for the Climb Wyoming candidates in terms of diversity of equipment and exposure, working not just like over the road, but in a construction setting. And we would like to have them extend for some months as, as budgeted funds allow within the department. This has been especially, and I'm sure Gene can elaborate, but we've had two to three people out during this period with major health issues. And this has allowed some of the projects to continue so that they could drive all gravel while other people operated equipment and continued operation. So we're just requesting to fill, essentially, continue with the individuals we have using the budgeted funds that were originally approved.
Thank you, Gary. Gene, do you have anything to add?
The only thing I have to add is just what a great program it is. You know, I worked in the construction industry for twenty-five years. I know when I moved here, Climb Wyoming was just getting started, and Arnie Lewis was instrumental in that because he would hire whole entire classes of truck drivers and put them to work in successful careers. And with the two ladies that we've been able to work with, they're very different in their personalities, but their skills are there. And the thing is, it's just exposure, time in the seat. And they've got time on, you know, belly dumps, water trucks. They both, when we, we have to interview them in a three-week and a six-week time period, they both expressed interest in learning other pieces of equipment, which we were trying to give them opportunities. But one thing about this, as Gary alluded to, is with the different things that go on during the summer vacations, we had some major illnesses, surgeries in the Road Bridge Department. With the help of these ladies and, and then just the emergency planning that we do, we were able to, through the CMAC project, which typically takes three months, just a little over two months and a week. And that's by keeping, you know, not extending the budget out, but using our resources wisely, using the things out there and plugging some holes with some seasonal employees. It provided a great skill for us and a great opportunity for them.
Thank you, Gene. Commissioners, questions before we move on with the motion? Any question?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I've been involved with, obviously, I'm liaison with Gene and Gary, and this is a win-win situation. I, I think it's good for the Climb Wyoming, and it's extremely good for the State of, or Sweetwater County, and I strongly support continuing it.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson. Other commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, can I make just one additional comment? The real goal of the program is, is to, to secure, help individuals secure full-time employment. And by getting opportunities into areas that were non-traditional, perhaps work. And from our standpoint, you know, obviously, we've been discussing early retirement. We'll discuss it some more at the next meeting perhaps. But if we have vacancies, you know, these might be some areas that we'd have opportunity to fill some vacancies from. This is a good trial period. The other thing that I, I think we've discussed a little bit, as we downsize the workforce in, in, in this area, since two thousand eleven, we've reduced eleven positions from the Roden Bridge Department. But as we reduce those numbers, our flexibility to deal with things like illness, injury, during the YDOT presentation, you saw all the different funds. If we get certain road project funds, our ability to scale work up and down is, is very limited. So you know, we've had a number of conversations trying to find a way to develop a contingent workforce rather than having a bunch of full-time positions that sometimes we don't need or underutilize. We need a few positions that we can scale up, maybe work hard time. And then obviously, that'd be a good candidate pool, maybe to draw full-time positions to become available. So all the way around, I think this program, as well as the experience we've had with the two individuals, supports the current work program in the department as well as the financial goals of the county.
Thank you, Gary. Any other comments, commissioners, questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Schoenfield?
I just wanted to say thank you to both Gary and Gene for working with Climb Wyoming program. I knew this was new this year, and I had the opportunity to work and bring any climb and to help them with their interviews. And when hearing that we were opening these seasonal positions, had the opportunity to kind of make a little bit of a connection there. And they are very, very thankful for the partnership with the county and for us being able to hire their two, two climb participants. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Schoenfield. Any other comments, commissioners? Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Johnson?
I'd make a motion that we approve the request to continue the employment of these two individuals from Climb Wyoming as requested by Roden Bridge, Mr. Legursky.
We have a motion to extend the hiring of the seasonal help. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Schoenfield. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Appreciate that. It's a wonderful thing for Climb Wyoming as well as for Sweetwater County. Good job, Gene, Gary. All right. Next up on our list is restaff vacant positions in Detention Center. And joining us is not only Mr. McLean, but our Sheriff, Mr. Grossnickel. Sheriff Grossnickel, welcome.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, commissioners.
Thank you. The floor is yours, Mr. McLean and Mr. Grossnickel.
Mr. Chairman, County Commissioners, Sheriff Grossnickel is requested to restaff a recent vacancy in the Detention Center. You know, with the current hiring freeze, felt like it was appropriate to come back and discuss this with, with the board. As I've discussed with the board many times and have done some pretty extensive presentations to go through and explain the staffing levels in the Detention Center. The, the Detention Center, I was involved with the original migration from the linear facility that we were in that only held maybe thirty people to the facility we have now, which has a maximum capacity of over two-eleven. And it's fundamentally different design, and, and that design has a minimum number of staffing to cover the posts within that facility. So as an example, two people, an adult, one in juvenile, one in booking, one rover, so on and so forth. There really, it, it, there's no safe way to staff the facility with less than we're staffing it now. That staffing arrangement was done by the transition team. We've addressed the posts and for the level of supervision that they have, both officers' safety and inmates' safety, there just isn't a, a safe way to staff the facility at lower numbers than that. So I would support and recommend to the board that we restaff this position.
Thank you, Gary. Sheriff Grossnickel, anything to add? You're muted, Sheriff. Sheriff, you're muted.
Sorry about that. I just echo what Mr. McLean says. Um, there, there are minimum standards that we have to have as far as the detention officers there for the safety of it, the entire facility.
Thank you, Sheriff. Uh, Commissioners, questions or comments? Commissioners, any comments?
Yeah, I'd just like to say I think, um, uh, Sheriff Grossnickel from the letter explaining the need and, and, um, and, you know, when we went to look at a phrase, one of the reasons I wanted to still have some leeway with situations like this where positions are definitely needed for health and safety reasons and legal litigation reasons and just, um, quality of service. So I see this as a position that we should restaff.
Thank you, Commissioner Lloyd. Other comments? Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Schoenfield.
I will make a motion to restaff the detention officer position immediately as presented.
We have a motion to restaff as presented. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. Any further discussion? No further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you for joining us, Sheriff. Appreciate your time and appreciate the work everybody's doing out there. You've had some, uh, particular interesting moments this last month and pretty trying on your staff and everybody, and they've roasted the occasion, and we do appreciate that very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, and, uh, I will express that to everybody that's been, been involved with those. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to Tab L is, it originally was a request to approval of a facility usage indemnity agreement with the election polling place at Catholic Church. But we amended that in our, to ratify the facility usage indemnity agreement for the election polling place at Catholic Church. Gary, I think you were aboard for that, and Cindy Lane. So Cindy, the floor is yours, or Gary?
Yeah, I'll, uh, address initially, um, each time we have an election, um, the county clerk has to secure various locations for polling places. Um, the Catholic Church in Green River has been, um, that location for a number of years. Um, in so doing, the Catholic Church has an agreement, uh, so that any accidents or injuries that occur while conducting the election are not their responsibilities, but will be handled by the county's, uh, insurance. As it so happens, the, uh, renewal of the property and liability insurance, um, um, was prosecuted or executed after the board approved the fiscal year, uh, twenty-twenty-one budget. Um, so by the, we had to submit proof of insurance. By the time we got that and got that to them, got on the board, um, we were essentially at the, uh, general, our primary election time. So I contacted three of the Commissioners, uh, to, um, review, a- after John had reviewed that agreement, and I provided Cindy, who provided to the Catholic Church, proof of insurance. Um, the, the, uh, County Commission Chairman signed that agreement so that we were in place to secure the polling place. And the request before the, uh, board today is to, uh, ratify that agreement.
Thank you, Mr. McLean. Ms. Lane, do you have anything to add? You're muted. You're muted. You're still muted. There you go.
Okay, I'm good. All right, no, thank you for that. Um, it would have been approved hopefully today, but that was the Ca- um, Catholic Church said they needed it before today. So I appreciate the signing of that letter so we can have the polling location open today.
Thank you. Any questions for our clerk, county clerk, Ms. Lane, or Mr. McLean, Commissioners? With no questions, I would entertain a motion that, uh, we approve the ratified agreement that was signed by the chairman, the indemnity agreement. Got a motion by Commissioner Lloyd. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Smith. Any further discussion? Further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving on to Tab N, which is the human service agreements. Uh, that will be presented by our county clerk, Ms. Lane.
Morning Chairman, County Commissioners. Um, I have the authorization for human service contracts from the YWCA for two-hundred-and-eighty-thousand-five-hundred-and-thirty-two dollars. University of Wyoming Extension, the four-H contract for forty-seven-thousand-ninety-four dollars. The Boys and Girls Club of Sweetwater County for forty-six-thousand-one-hundred-seventy dollars. The Youth Home Incorporated for one-hundred-and-fifty-four-thousand-six-hundred-and-seventy dollars. Climb Wyoming for five thousand. Volunteer Informational Referral Service for one-hundred-four-thousand-five-hundred. And the Golden Hour Senior Center for two-hundred-and-eighteen-thousand-one-hundred-and-fifty. These amounts, um, total eight-hundred-and-fifty-six-thousand-one-hundred-and-sixteen dollars, and they were approved during the budget process.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Lane. Commissioners, any questions for Ms. Lane regarding the hu- human service agreements? With there being no questions, then I would entertain a motion that, uh, we approve and au- approve the, uh, hu- human service agreement and authorize the chair to sign each individual agreement. We have a motion by Commissioner Schoenfield. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lloyd. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. They're all complete and they will be signed. Our next.
Mr. Chairman, I think you skipped over it.
Over what?
Tab M.
Which wa- oh my God, you're exactly right. Thank you. Ms. Lane, we'll go back.
Okay.
This is a, uh, publication of name, position, and base, uh, salaries of amounts to be posted of county employees and elect officials. Go ahead.
Yes, what we have is the pursuant to Wyoming's, um, statute eighteen dash three dash five-one-six B, publication of name, position, base annual salary, and the amount of overtime pay to each full-time employee and each elected official. And this is to be posted in our county newspapers, so it will be posted in the Green River Star. Um, this year, we, um, the statute was changed to include overtime paid. And previously, we just had the amount of annual salary. Now, if you make any overtime, that is included, and we just have to report the total amount. But these, these amounts that are listed include overtime.
Thank you, Ms. Lane. Commissioners, any questions? I have one. Us, what was the purpose of including overtime, Ms. Lane?
Um, I, I don't know. The state legislators, I think, want to know how much everyone is actually getting paid and not just what their annual salary, salary is. I.
Fair enough.
I didn't want to that.
I know. I just thought I'd ask. I just. Okay, any other questions, Commissioners? With that, Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Johnson.
I make a motion to approve the publication of, uh, positions and salaries as requested, uh, by county clerk and required by law.
Okay, we have a motion to, um, publish, publication. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Schoenfield. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
You are so welcome. Thank you, Ms. Lane, and thank you, Commissioner Johnson, for bringing that to our attention. Now, next up is the, another amended item to our agenda under Tab O, which will be All West Communication Update. And, uh, not only did Commissioners receive a letter, uh, regarding the, uh, update, but also here to present is, um, Mr. Corolo and I believe, um, Mr. Walkenhorst. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you. Good morning, gentlemen, and welcome. And I'll turn the floor over to whichever one of you want to take the lead, Marty or Jack.
Okay. Yeah, good morning, good afternoon to each of you, and, uh, yeah, I'll take the lead here, and I appreciate, we appreciate the opportunity to be part of the, uh, County Commissioners Meeting. First off, I'd just like to open it up if, if any of you, after receiving the letter, uh, have questions. Um, I just wanted to open that up first before I explain a little bit of our reasoning and the whys and the whats, so.
Okay. Uh, Commissioners, we got a letter. If you had a chance to review it, do you have any questions?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Johnson.
The reason that, uh, you're here today is, uh, as you called, Jack, uh, couple, three years ago, you, uh, indicated when you took over from, uh, uh, from the Corolos that it was going to be better, et cetera, et cetera, and, uh, and, uh, in some of the circles I travel here, especially recently, uh, it's primarily with the seniors. They're not too happy with what's going on. They, they have gotten kind of used to when they want to watch TV, they push a button and the TV comes on. They want to change channels. There's another button they push, they change channels. When they're through, they shut, push that same button again and it shuts down. And they're very, very concerned as to where their TV's going to come from. And so, uh, I, I think you're overlooking the fact, not you necessarily, Jack, but I think All West is overlooking the fact that they serve us a large number of seniors in Sweetwater County, and they're not too happy with what you're doing. Possibly part of it's because they don't understand, but, uh, uh, they're not happy. And, uh, and I don't think, in speaking for them, of course, I am one of them, uh, but speaking for them is this, this isn't in line with what you promised was going to happen when you purchased the Corolos out of, uh, uh, their, purchased their business. One of the things in the letter that you say is, uh, on November first, you'll just continue our traditional cable TV service at that time. You know, you're going to do it, so they have no choice. But then later in the letter, you say, plus an easy-to-use interface, expanded options, and more control, et cetera, et cetera. Uh, they questioned that. Uh, they received this letter, not the one that I have in front of me, but they received this letter and they, they, they're not so sure. Then further down in the letter, you say you sign up for All West, et cetera, and it says, uh, uh, with free internet install. That was, uh, for a certain period of time, for three months. But then what happens? And I'm going to get, give you these questions, then you can answer them all at one time. Then what happens? Then you say you're going to give, uh, each of them a free Amazon fire stick. Is that for each TV set? Uh, some, one, one of the seniors said, he's got eleven TV sets in his house. He's going to have to have eleven Amazon fire sticks? And, uh, then, uh, you've got this asterisk here that says, option one requires one year, All West TV, et cetera. And it says, uh, after one year, then what's the cost going to be? So those are the questions I have, uh, Jack, and I appreciate that very much. And I also would like to, uh, reemphasize, and I've said many times, we're very, very appreciative of Marty. Uh, you know, we all know Marty and we know the Corolo family, and whenever we have a problem, uh, we can turn to him. And you're very wise in keeping Marty online, on, on, in your organization because he, he's a godsend. Oh, one other point that, that they brought up, while I'm thinking is, then you close your o- offices down there so those seniors can't even get to you. So that, that doesn't sit too well with them. And then when you can get to them, the people in that office does, they don't seem to know what's going on. So anyway, Jack, uh, I know it's not all your fault, uh, but, uh, you know, I work for those people, and so those are my questions.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson. Uh, I, 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 some of those are some of the questions I had as well. Uh, one other one I would add to it is, is, you know, one of the biggest things we run into with these streaming outfits and, 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 uh, whether I like it or not, with some of the dish TVs is local news, and I prefer Wyoming over Utah. But at the same token, uh, I don't get Wyoming, and, and with these streaming outfits, uh, sometimes local is delayed a day, sometimes it's not. So I think local's going to be a huge question, but I really expected the question from Wally, Commissioner Johnson, was, uh, people asking him is, uh, how, how long would that fire stick last for lighting a bonfire outside? I mean, you know?
I've, I missed that one.
Yeah, I looked at it and I go, I, I'm going, when you said they're asking how many fire sticks, I'm thinking the first question would be is, what's a fire stick?
I can assure you, those people, those people, they don't know, nor, nor, nor do I.
What a fire stick was till a year and a half ago. What are you talking about? Anyway, enough of that. Uh, I, uh, you can answer those questions, or you can wait until other Commissioners have questions. That's entirely up to you, Jack and Marty.
I, I, I think we're open. Um, there's quite a few questions that have been posed, so we'll try and answer them. And if, if we forget some, please remind us here.
We can do that. We're good at that.
Okay, that's great. Um, you know, we've been, it's been almost three years since, since we purchased Sweetwater. And boy, if, uh, if anybody could have, uh, read the crystal ball as to where we would be three years from, from that point, you're doing better than I. But, uh, kind of, we'll try and, we'll try and, uh, take each question as we can here. Um, boy, the, the pay TV, the cable TV market is changing very rapidly. Um, the number of cable customers that we have today is about half of what we had when we purchased Sweetwater, uh, three years ago, uh, for various reasons. Um, you know, the costs continue to go up, the content providers continue to increase costs. Um, other options are out there, uh, be it streaming, uh, Netflix, Hulu, YouTube, things like that. Um, people, uh, get their entertainment in, in a lot of different ways now. Um, I fully understand because I'm, I'm in that age group. I'm an over sixty person. Um, I like to sit down and, and hit a couple of buttons and watch TV. I don't have a lot of time to do that, but I like to do that. Um, so the, the product is changing, the market is changing, um, how we deliver the service is changing, and the, the dynamics of the industry continues to change. Um, kind of on the question of with the, with traditional TV going away and All West TV being there, uh, will those options still be there? Um, I have All West TV at my house. I can go in. I have two remotes. I have the remote for the TV and the remote for the fire stick, as we were talking about fire sticks. And I don't know how well it would start a fire. I haven't tried that. Um, a few years ago, I didn't know what a fire stick was. Uh, but it is, it is pretty simple to use. It's pretty straightforward. Um, you know, it's very similar to, to what they have now. Uh, the question of, uh, you know, with All West TV, you do have to have an All West internet connection. And realizing that there are probably a lot of the older folks that don't have an internet connection now. And so that would be an additional cost to have that inner connection, internet connection with the, uh, with the TV connection. Um, but along with that, there would be some reduced costs on the TV side in that you don't need set-top boxes. Um, the packages are a little bit less expensive. Um, with All West TV, everything is in HD, so you're not paying a, a separate HD charge. And DVR is available up to a hundred hours, so you're not paying, um, additional DVR charges. Um, and those things could, our, our customer service people would be happy to work through and answer any questions that individuals, individual customers have in that regard, um, regarding those things. Um, as we continue to, uh, you know, as, as we continue to look at, uh, what we've been doing in Rock Springs, Green River, um, broadband is really the driving force, and that's what people want. Um, just in the last year, we've, we've, uh, uh, connected over six hundred new residential and, and commercial customers, uh, with broadband in the Rock Springs, Green. with broadband in the Rock Springs, Green River area. So that's another thing that's really driving us and say, where do we go from here? Video is definitely a viable market, a viable service, but it's not one, it's not one that's not going to continue to change. Reading a report just recently said, just in the last quarter alone, the second quarter of 2020, that over two million subscribers cut the cord and disconnected pay TV services. And an estimate that another two million that normally would have subscribed to those services did not. And so that's about a seven to eight percent decline, annual decline, if that, if that keeps going. So that's just a few things in regards to where we're at, where we're going, kind of what our thought process is. Remind me of some of the other questions that, that you had, Commissioners?
Yeah, Jack, one of them was that, that nineteen ninety-five per month for three months, then what?
Okay, on the internet, the internet connection, nineteen ninety-five, and that's up to a gig. After three months, a one hundred meg internet connection would be fifty-nine ninety-five. That's the normal cost of a one hundred meg internet connection. The question on the fire stick, it would be one, the offer is one fire stick on that. Not, it would not be eleven, for an individual that has eleven TVs. I don't know the exact cost on a fire stick, but it's, I think I got one recently, it was about forty to forty-five dollars, I got one from Amazon for a second TV in my house, so.
So I, the answer that, Jack, is that one for every TV set?
No, one, one per subscription, as far as free, but you would, you would need one for each TV.
Yeah, that, that does it. And then the other last question I had is, option one requires an all TV, et cetera, and then, then you answered that question, I guess, fifty-nine ninety-five.
Yes, okay. Any other questions from other Commissioners or Commissioner Welding or Commissioner Johnson?
The, Jack, one other question is, is without going in and looking at what your package is like, what, 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 what locals are you going to carry, Utah or Wyoming?
Marty, kind of help me with that, what, what do we have right now?
Yes, so right now, we do carry both the locals out of Casper and also the channels out of, out of Salt Lake. Our contracts, though, we're going into retrans, going into next year. Retrans can always be a tricky business, depending on what, what the broadcasters are going to force upon the, the providers to be able to offer. But at this point, our intention is to keep on the Salt Lake and the Casper channels on the All West TV.
Thank you. The other question too is, anytime you have a changeover, there's always a thought of learning, training. And I know the difficulty, I consider myself pretty tech savvy, don't ask Wally that, if that's true or not. I consider myself pretty tech savvy, but when it comes to using devices, dealing with streaming TV and that, how much time are your people going to spend with, and kids pick it up immediately, I'm talking about my generation older. You know, reboot every now and then, you understand technology, some of it's day to day until we get used to it. So, you know, what are we going to offer? What, what are you thinking of doing to help people to learn to use that service, especially our seniors?
I think our marketing person is on, but I can't see her here. One, I mean, one thing that we've talked about, Marty and I have talked about, and it's a little harder with, with COVID. But in the past, and I think I can speak fairly confidently, Commissioner Welding, this would be the same moving forward. Are, both our customer service representatives and our technicians have been very willing and management has been very willing to let them invest the time, you know, within reason, but as much as they possibly can in, in talking through and helping individuals learn how to use the system. As I said, it's a little harder with COVID. I mean, we're still, technicians are going into customers' homes and new customers' homes every day with masks and, and proper PPE and, and physical distancing and all of those things. Our front offices are not open right now, you know, to the public for the various reasons. But there again, our customer service reps are either in the office or working from home and very willing to, to take the time that's needed to work through the new system with, with customers and, and with folks of all, of all ages. And kind of back to what I mentioned before, I was a little slow to migrate to the new system for the various reasons that you're talking about. But once I did it and once I got going, it's, I actually like it better than what I had before, so. Hopefully, that kind of answers your question.
It, it does, I just think about that, Marty?
Yeah, I was, I was going to say, we, we have just recently opened the Rock Springs offices from one to five with proper social distancing that comes in, so that, that has changed. And the other thing is, we, we also have, you know, we talk about the TV product and the, the prices that have gone up substantially over the years. And it has been the programmers that have driven those costs, not the cost that it costs us to do it. So one of the things that this does is we can't control those costs, we either take the program or we don't. But we can, through this product, offer a much better value. With the DVR, the high definition, start over, restart, video on demand. You catch a movie thirty minutes into it, you can start over, those add value. And the value is, is very important, once you get a chance to use it. And that, that, those are the features that are, that drove us to this, this product. But the other thing is, we, we do have a small converter. We, we like people to get away and minimize our costs as much, but there are some small converters that we have that do look very much like a traditional converter. You turn them on, it goes right to All West TV and you, you watch the channel, you have the guide, you have all the things on there. They do have the other smart TV features, kind of behind the scenes. But for a lot of people, all they want is just that simple interface, and this does provide it. With the extra bonuses of the DVR and all those other features.
Thank you, Marty. Any other questions for Marty or Jack at this point in time, Commissioner? Mr. Shanefield.
I don't have a question, I just wanted to tell Lori and Jack, congratulations on the three projects. Thank you for putting in, for the expansion, for Porter, Cokeville and Smith's Fork. As many people know, Smith's Fork is only going to serve eight customers, so a build-out is not economical for a lot of providers or any providers. And so this CARES Act funding has allowed All West to reach out and provide those services and, and get the infrastructure in place to provide services to those very rural people, so.
Great, good, great information, thank you, Lauren.
Well, yes, I'm sorry, Jack, I'm going to step in here, to that, to that end, we talk a lot about, and Lauren and I are on a, on an economic development. And, and one of the questions we go into is, we're getting ready to build out Kemer as well. We start that project this week with fiber to Kemer and Diamondville. And what, the thing we have learned over specifically the last couple of years and really dramatically in the last six months is that broadband is the driver for economic development. And the things that we're doing here, we're meeting on Zoom. We are going to see people accessing much more content this way. It, it is a way to pre- provide interactive services. So for our seniors out there, I'm working with the AARP right now. We're going to be putting out some general guidelines of the things that can be done over good broadband that allow people to stay in their homes longer and be more interactive as they can't get to the senior center. And, and all those things, and, and so it is a changing environment we're in, but it's, it's the environment that's here.
Thank you, Marty. Any other questions for either Jack or Marty?
Just to comment, if I could, Mr. Chairman. Marty and Jack, again, I appreciate very much your willingness to respond to the request to come to the Commission when, when it's appropriate and, and talk to us. And you do recognize that we, we represent everyone in Sweetwater County and appreciate that very much.
Thank, thank you for the opportunity, Commissioners.
Thank you, thank you, gentlemen, and we appreciate you being here today and bringing us up to speed. Is there any, if there's no more, we'll continue to move on with our business. Gentlemen, safe, and thank you for your work.
And thank you very much.
Okay, with that, that concludes our business for today on our regular agenda. But at this point in time, I'd like to go into executive session for personnel. So if we could get a motion to go into executive session, we'll do that.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Smith.
Before we do that, could I just have one moment?
Yes, you may.
Make a comment, thank you. It was, it was brought to my attention that during one of our breaks, that perhaps we're not getting along as well as we used to, and somebody was wondering why that is. And Lauren talked about COVID fatigue, and I just wanted to say, I really do miss being face-to-face with all of you and having our side conversations during breaks or, or even during the meetings and, and, you know, looking at the whites of Roy's eyes when he's marinating and, and that. So I do miss all of you and I wish we could, could all be together, it sounds like we'll be able to get there eventually. And I'm grateful for the plan that's been put together to allow that, but it is tough, this COVID fatigue, the, the Zoom. It's not the same, so just to let the people know that we, we, we're doing the work. It's a little bit harder, but it's not quite the same, but we're still trying to do the work, so there you go. And I'll get a motion to go into executive session.
Thank you. I think, wait a minute, we got a motion to go into exec session, but I thought someone had a comment prior to that.
Motion.
All right, second motion, thank you, Commissioner Johnson, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carries, and I'd just like to say, Commissioner Smith, whoever brought that observation to you, I'm glad it was brought forth because yes, I will look forward for all of us getting together again. I do miss the personable in us and I do miss being in the same room, I do miss the sidebars. But the one thing I will say for this Commission through all of this and that is that they have stepped up to the plate, done their very best, and will continue to do their best. And when we get together, it will even get better. So I, I appreciate that observation and that. So with that, we'll take a, let's take a ten-minute break and be back together here at, let's say, let's say at one oh five.